Yes, whenever you are, we can take the roll call.
All right, thank you. All right, then, we'll call to order the May 13th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We are meeting tonight pursuant to Governor's Executive Order N-2920, by which members of the council and staff are participating in the meeting via live teleconference to reduce the spread of COVID-19. Members of the public have been asked to watch the meeting via livestream on the city's website or via wave cable, Channel 20, and do submit comments in writing to the city clerk by 6:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. Those comments that have been received by the city clerk as public comment are posted on the website alongside the agenda and the livestream video for the meeting. So the members of the public, other members of the public can see the complete text of all comments that have been submitted on each agenda item. When we have public comment on an item, we'll note the commenter, the city clerk will note that at the meeting, during the meeting, and then the full text of the comments have been provided directly to members of the city council and are also available to all members of the public on the website next to the agenda and the livestream. So with that, we're going to proceed to Item 1A, which is presentation by the public on matters not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the city clerk, random clerk, city council. Madam clerk, do we have any public comment under Item 1A?
No comments were received for this meeting.
Right, thank you, madam clerk. Then Item 1B is council communications. Are there reports or other communications from the council designated liaison assignments? Mayor Protem Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The executive mission to address homelessness met on May 7. Heard staff presentations on COVID-19 mitigation of homeless in motels, CARES Act CDVG funding and SB2 planning. A request was made by the staff that work on this, the staff of the commission, that CARES CDVG funding potentially be combined across municipalities in Yolo County to support homeless services. And I believe the city managers will be taking this up along with talking about the needs of each community for those CDVG funds at an upcoming meeting. In addition, we discussed exit strategies and long-term planning needs for the homeless currently being housed in motels. And I think we'll need to assess city needs, county services, and then consider the best path forward before the commission's next meeting on June 4. I hope to coordinate and I plan to coordinate with the city manager and the mayor on moving that discussion forward. I think that's a big discussion for us in the next couple of weeks. And then earlier today, the Yolo County Housing Met, and we heard an update to the response to COVID-19, again CARES Act funding and constraints. And we also approved a resolution for the adoption of HUD waivers. And we received a report on Blueprint 2020. I'm happy to report that the docs were signed yesterday for the permanent supportive housing project on West Capitol as well. And then, right after the Yolo County Housing Meeting, we had the New Hope Development Corporation, in which I chair, and we met and talked about a 0% forgivable loan to support residents during the conversion to, I mean, new utility structure. There's solar now in some of the facilities. And in response to the COVID situation, we're trying to be creative in coming up with a way to provide resources for some of the residents. And we also approved an intergovernmental agreement with the county for proposed acquisitions of Paul 14, 8th Street in Davis. That's my report, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem Sandin. Other reports? Councilmember Ledesma?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good to see everyone. Couple of meetings to report on. First, this past Monday, May 11th, we had first meeting in a while of the Yolo County Transportation District. It was our opportunity to catch up with staff on their operational impacts to YCTD in Yolo Bus. And they say, I think, Aaron and team have been updating you on the COVID updates. Ridership is down significantly, as would be expected as we're in the shelter in place. And the executive director and team have done a good job of reducing, using their emergency authority to reduce routes and twice looking for areas of opportunity to supplement some of their work into helping to transport food and other things has been asked. So they've done good work there, but they are continuing to look at ridership and making sure they are able to meet the needs of a changing ridership environment. So they're monitoring that. More so, a couple of things, we did continue, the executive director's authority, we approved that. And, but we started a proposed conversation around the proposed preliminary budget for YCTD for 2021. And the important punchline is, is the short term. Because of the availability of CARES Act funding for transit, I think what's proposed is we'll see a nominal decrease in the amount of what's coming back to the city. I think that was the first read. But there were questions that the board raised, and there will be some robust conversations going forward around long-term, kind of long-term prospects for the agency in Yolo Bus. Every transit district in the country is going to benefit from CARES Act funding. But what's, as we know, and we'll be talking about later in our discussions on the budget, is kind of one of the long-term impacts where I think we're probably more concerned about what happens in year two, three, as we get into the budget cycles for YCTD. So it was a very robust conversation and one that we welcomed. And board members and myself included just reminded the board and the district as cities start to grapple with the impacts of the COVID-19 economic realities. And we continue to learn from them. We'll have to monitor these budgets very tightly, monitor ridership very tightly. While the CARES Act does plug holes and keep people employed and all the things it acted to do, we will need to monitor, as we were already thinking with the COA, comprehensive operational analysis that we did at the beginning of the year, we were doing with our vision and priorities exercises that we had led at the district level. We were already thinking about sustainability and efficiency of the district. And this really puts it clearly in the focus. So those are conversations we'll be having, and just want to report back that we had that. Also, just earlier tonight, and still going, I believe, is the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change. It was a robust, like I said, they're still going, and I left that earlier. But on the agenda tonight, David Tilly from the staff provided an update on our climate action plan, as is Sacramento, a lot of still discussion and focus from advocates who are trying to keep their eye on the ball, rightly so, on the importance of climate change. But certainly, COVID-19 has changed the dynamics of how cities will approach this. And that was addressed a little bit by both by us and Sacramento. We did vote on, there was an equity task force that looked at how the cities can approach climate change and within inclusive principles and towards equity of areas of neighborhoods that are not usually represented. And we approved those priorities that they had. We also heard from the Sac Metro Chamber tonight, who gave us an update on kind of the business roundtable that was facilitated by them on their viewpoints of the climate change. And certainly, they are feeling the direct impacts of their members from climate change. So they had some very stark reminders for us all, as I reminded them, we're facing them too. And those are things we will be mindful of as we continue on the climate change. And the commission staff through the local government commission had recommended talking to Sacramento, as well as some members about, they drafted some recommendations for possible year-one projects. As we look to finalize the climate change report in our next meeting in June, and that's what they're reviewing, the draft report on that now. They are looking at areas that cities can focus on around year-one projects. And a lot, and a few of them had to point to energy efficiency incentives for energy sustainability and working with partners. And I had asked, on behalf of our representing this West Sacramento, that we, I support the idea of those year-one recommendations, but certainly, any incentives or any programs or commitments we would make around incentives for certification of efficiency. And other words, other types of projects with our current partner at PG&E are just not going to be feasible. Or at least, not as well as might, we'll be able to achieve those with Sacramento. And I'd ask them to put into that report the challenges we face because of our energy provider. And that's something that we will want to address at some point. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, that I, that that was a discussion point tonight. And again, they're still working on it, and we'll be meeting again in June to finalize those recommendations. That's all of the report, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'd report, the Sacog Transportation Committee met on Thursday and took up a couple of items that are interesting here. First is, we took up final approval of the Regional Active Transportation Program Policy Framework. I reported on this at, I think, two meetings ago. So we've been having a vigorous debate about a couple of issues with respect to the regional allocation of ATP funds. Council will recall the Active Transportation Program is a state-funded program, part of which is awarded competitively at the state level and part of which is awarded competitively at the regional level. And it is for active transportation, so principally walking, biking, and other, and other active forms. And that is, and it is awarded by competition. And so the discussion and debate has been about the framework for how that competition has to change or evolve or stay the same into the future. So the board is, the Board of Directors has been debating an increase in the target for dollars going to disadvantaged communities. The regional target is currently 25% of the dollars. And the proposal that we proposed in the Transportation Committee over the last year and a half has been to move that to 35% to go to disadvantaged communities. The Board of Directors, the full board, had, there were quite a few members that had concerns about that. I think I reported last time, a couple of them, you know, and so far as to say, we, you know, we do, we do plenty for disadvantaged communities, it's time to do something for the rest of us. It was quite a, it was quite a, you know, a bear debate at the last, last board meeting. It was referred to the committee. The committee approved, and the board had delegated to the committee final approval authority. So the board approved the 35% number. The 35% number is a target, it's not a hard number, but it is an important sort of policy statement about where we're headed. At the same time, I would just note that it's, it's, it's our average, the average allocations that we've actually been awarding through the ATP program through the last three rounds have been over 60% to disadvantaged communities. So although this is an important policy statement, the 25 to 35 isn't actually change what we've been doing, which has been dramatically higher than those, than those targets. In West Sacramento, about 40% of our land area, I think, or maybe 35% is in a disadvantaged community designated zone. So that can be based on poverty, it can be based on minority demographic status, it can be based on some environmental standards through the Calenviron scan process as well. So it's a, it's a mix of things, and it's, of course, like any other measure, it's imperfect. But it does result in support in giving extra points for projects and support for projects like the Sigma Moore Trail, which has been, we've submitted for the ATP project all the times, including having won a portion for one of its phases. So that was issue number one. Issue number two, I reported on, I think, two meetings ago, also was a proposal from staff, well, actually, from the Public Works Directors of the region, to reduce the match requirement for the ATP program, under the theory that jurisdictions were stressed right now and it would be better to keep the money, keep more money in the, in the hands of the cities and counties that are building the ATP projects. I objected to that, you know, the, it doesn't keep any, the total amount of money going to cities and counties doesn't change when you, when you move the, the match requirement. It just means one or two fewer cities and counties get a grant in the first place, right? The money just doesn't go as far when there isn't a grant, when, when there isn't as significant of a match requirement. And frankly, you know, we, it's, we or any other city might have the project that's number six on the, on the list of five. And you don't know until the competition's over whether or not this is going to hurt you or not. And so I've raised some concerns about it, partly to maintain support for the equity standard. I did ultimately agree to do, to the change this one time. But I remain concerned about, I think it reminded me of the importance that, you know, we're in a position in West Sacramento, and as we talked later in the evening about our, our financial and capital outlay status, of being able to continue to build our projects. That puts us at a competitive advantage in many ways. And, and so it's just a reminder that as other jurisdictions are thinking, they cannot complete their road project or their interchange or their bike path or what have you, that the extent to which we are, we stay the course and are ready to, to compete for and scoop up resources that become available through the, you know, unfortunate circumstances in other locations, that it's, it's to our benefit and to the community's benefit to be able to grab those resources and, and build and try to make those community improvements while, while we, while we're in a stronger competitive position. So with that, the ATP framework was adopted for the, for the, for this coming up, upcoming funding round. The other issue that was before the committee is the major, is the big policy framing for the 100-plus million dollars that we're going to be allocating in the upcoming funding, transportation funding round. These are funds, state and federal funds that the Sacog programs at the regional scale, basically through delegated authority from the state and from the federal government. So they're, they're regional dollars in terms of who decides, but they come from the state and the federal government, and Sacog has been designated with the authority to allocate them. So there are a lot of policy issues that are at play in that in terms of the upcoming allocations to match them up with Rena, with our regional housing needs allocation, with our metropolitan transportation plan and sustainable community strategy. But the big battle that's going on right now is that the Public Works Directors in the region got together and have, and submitted a, a letter and a proposal to Sacog demanding essentially that we shift to a formula-based approach to allocating those funds. Their concern, you know, their issue was jurisdictions want to have certainty, they want to know how much money they're going to have. The jurisdiction is in a better position to make a decision about what they need than, than the region is. All these competitions require staff time to put competitive proposals together. So they proposed that we shift a significant amount or a majority of the funds to a formula basis that would be based on, you know, something related to population or population and road miles or some other static thing. That's hugely problematic from all kinds of perspectives. So it started the local perspective, it would significantly disadvantage us. We are a very competitive city in, both because, you know, we have an excellent staff, we put together good proposals, we're smart about the matching requirements. But all, but, but just as important or more importantly, we're the, we're the city that has the, you know, is well-understood as the strongest in terms of our sustainable development strategies, affordable housing developments, all those sort of the key indicators that are the subject of these competitions, we're very strong on. And so, you know, and frankly, a couple of the jurisdictions said this was the only way to keep us from getting all the money. So, so I understand, but it's a, it's a big problem in terms of us. But we're just a canary in the coal mine on this issue because it's not that those issues benefit us. It's that those are what the region has said and what the state has said are absolutely necessary, that we build a more sustainable land use pattern, that we deal with climate issues and air pollution issues, and then we deal with affordable housing in particular. So the region can't achieve its objectives if you just write a check to every single city and county and say, we hope you'll do the best with it. And so the secondary problem is that we all hang together, or as a, as a region. So currently, the region is on what's called an air quality, federal air quality lockdown. We cannot, we cannot program any new transportation projects that would increase the capacity of the existing system. So we cannot add any additional roads or freeways or bridges or anything like that to the transportation plan unless they were part of the old plan. And so we cannot add anything new because we are out of compliance with the federal air quality standards. That, we're out of compliance this time because of a battle between the state and the federal government over EPA standards. But we've been out of compliance before because not all jurisdictions have done their share and also have approved projects that have moved the emissions and the climate and the vehicle miles traveled models in the wrong direction. So if that happens, if El Grove in Sacramento County, for example, approve a series of poorly conceived projects that support a sprawling land use pattern, the impact of that is to turn off transportation funding for the entire region. So we can't just say, hey, you, good luck with your money, and I'll take mine, because it may mean, and it has meant in the past, that we don't get any money at all. And we're all now, that we're operating under the AB 32, SB 375 environment. We're responsible as a region for achieving a 19% reduction in climate emissions, which can only be accomplished through very tight and coordinated land use and transportation decisions. So this is a major battle going on. Our Public Works Director did not sign onto the letter, several have. And at the committee meeting, most of the board members were not in support of the proposal, including several whose Public Works Directors had signed it. So it's, it continues to be a fight. Obviously, Sacramento County in particular is the, is probably the leading jurisdiction on this, which isn't a big surprise given their land use pattern. But it is, it remains a major battle that's brewing over the next couple of months. City of Sacramento, Yolo County, and others are on the same side as us. But as, and Yubis, Marysville and other parts of the region too. But this one's definitely going to be a continuing, a continuing issue, probably at least through June. All right, and the only thing I'd think of from Sacog is that we've begun a, we've begun to focus even more now on telework. So there, we have a couple of telework sessions coming up on policies and standards and control policies that will try to retain some of the increase in telework that we've achieved, obviously, during, during that, during the shelter order. That, that portion of it that can be retained by sustaining, excuse me, employer policies that allow for employees to telework that, where that makes sense, and to support employees doing so in ways that are more than just a Zoom account and a computer, but the other kinds of supports that are necessary in order to do this on a, on a sustained basis. So there's a lot there, and telework has the potential to be a significant contributor on the climate issues and on air emissions and a bunch of other issues. So more to come, but that's going to occupy more of Sacog's attention in the coming, in the coming. All right, so with that, then, we'll proceed to Item 1C. We have no, we have no appointments this evening. So then, that will then bring us to Item 2, which is the Consent Agenda, the Consideration of Approval of the Minutes. Is there any question or debate on the Consent Agenda?
Move to approve.
Right, it's been moved by Councilmember Guerrero.
Second.
And seconded by Councilmember Orozco, that the Consent Agenda be adopted. Seeing no question or debate, madam clerk, would you please call the role on the Consent Agenda?
Yes. Mayor Protem Sandin.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
And Merrick Baldwin.
Aye.
Thank you.
The Consent Agenda is adopted. That brings us to Item 3, which is a financial update for COVID-19 impacts and consideration of Resolution 20-52 approving a waiver of credit card convenience fees for transient occupancy tax payments through January 31st, 2021. Ms. Raper.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, yeah, we would like to make a request to actually move this item back one spot so we can do the Treasury Report and allow our consultant to have the rest of the night.
So allow us to not pay our hourly consultant for another hour? Okay, so is there, with that objection, then, we'll take Item 4 up in, first, and then proceed to Item 3 and Item 5. So Item 4, it's consideration of the Treasurer's Quarterly Financial Report on the City's Investment Portfolio for the period ending March 31st, 2020. Ms. Raper?
So it's actually going to be me. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So typically, the quarterly treasurer's report is presented on the council's consent agenda. However, with tonight's financial update and all of the recent market volatility related to the global impacts of COVID-19, we thought it would be a good time to invite the city's investment advisor, Carlos Obletes from Chandler Asset Management, to really give a, an update on what the recent market conditions are, as well as an update on the city's investment portfolio. So at this time, I'm going to pass it over to Carlos for his presentation.
Good evening, honorable councilmembers. Thank you so much for having me update you on the situation. I know that you have your staff report, which gives you all the information that you need, but I brought some extra slides that will give you some color as to what we're observing. It's a very brief presentation, I'll keep it succinct. What I really hope is that you have questions and that you, you ask, and, and I'll be here to answer any questions you may have. I'm now going to share my screen. Let's see if I'm able to do that. And I think the host has disabled that, you have to be, I have to be enabled to do that.
Trying to.
Here we go. Okay, and can you all see the, the presentation? Okay, very good. Let's jump right in. So here are the key things that I want to highlight here. And I think if there's any takeaways from this presentation, these are they. The first is that we've experienced historic volatility in the stock markets and in the overall financial markets in the United States that has had very negative impacts on most types of investments. The levels of volatility that we've seen are probably the biggest that, certainly, that I've seen in my 25-year career, that many people will probably see in their lifetime. The second takeaway that I want to leave you with is that the portfolio that the city maintains is a portfolio that's designed by law for safety, for liquidity, and for, and then return, but primarily for safety and liquidity. It means that it's a diversified portfolio of securities. By law, you're only allowed to buy bond investments, and those investments have to be very high credit quality, and they have to be liquid. So the third takeaway I want you to take is that because this was designed for safety and liquidity, this portfolio entered into this environment from a position of strength, and it has performed as designed. You still maintain a lot of safety in, in the portfolio. Certainly, it is very liquid, and it's still continued to generate very competitive returns. If, if city staff were to give me a call tomorrow and say, Chandler Asset Management, we need you to liquidate this portfolio because we have an emergency and we're going to spend all this money, my answer to them would be yes, and when do you need it? So that's, those, those are the basic takeaways. Let's jump right in. I think you've seen a lot of economic news. I'm going to highlight the ones that we think are the most relevant, that are really impacting the overall economy, which then have an impact on your portfolio. The first is just understanding what's happening with the employment picture. You can see, this is, this slide is demonstrating to you the initial, the weekly initial claims for unemployment. And you can see that pre-COVID-19, COVID-19, in the weeks of February and early March, an average of, of initial jobless claims, oh, in the United States, came in at around 215,000, 220,000, and so forth. And then you could see the third week of March, that that climbed to 3.3 million, then followed by 6.8 million, then by 6.6 million. When you look at the ongoing jobless claims and cumulative, we're now at 22 million. It just kind of gives you an idea. This is a little bit of a difficult chart to read, certainly because of the magnitude of the numbers. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to zoom in so you can see what, the, the scale here. This, this particular, this particular scale, you can see, goes down into the millions. And what I'm getting at is this, these green bars that you saw were the monthly change in non-farm payrolls. Before COVID-19, we were averaging about a creation, a positive number of approximately 140,000 jobs per month that the economy was creating. And that was a very strong job performance. That was certainly more than the...
This is pretty fascinating, the unemployment.
What's that?
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll continue. So, so when you look at that change in non-farm payrolls, we were generating approximately 140,000 jobs per month, more than 110,000 entrance into the market. So well more than, it was enough to absorb new entrance into the market. Well, you can see that the, the, the first week, when, when you look at the, the change in non-farm payrolls in March, this little blip that you're looking at right underneath my cursor, if you're able to see that on the far right-hand side, was a record number. That was the March number, and it was a negative 800, over 800,000, 870,000, basic loss of jobs. It's 800, 870,000 jobs lost in the month of March. And when then, when you looked at April, this is this very large green bar right here. And this came in at a loss of 20 and a half million jobs. That took the unemployment rate, which is this gray line right here, and spiked it up. Previously, it was ranging around 3.5% annually. three and a half percent annually, where now upwards of fourteen point seven percent unemployment. We're we're now looking at approximately thirty three and a half million people unemployed out of a workforce of approximately one hundred and seventy million employees. That's what we're nearing a twenty percent unemployment rate. We're we're this is going to continue to climb. Now, the good news of all of this is that many of these, when they look at the surveys, many of these people that lost their jobs and filing for unemployment, about forty one percent, to give you an idea, anticipate that they should be getting their jobs back sometime after the economy recovers. So that this is a negative for the economy. I'm gonna go very quickly here. Consumers make up the majority of the growth in the United States of of economic growth. And and we like to look at retail sales because retail sales give us, it's it's one of the first numbers that comes out during the month and it gives us an idea of how consumers are spending. I just want you to note the March number, which plunged on a year over year basis. It it went down five point eight after an increase of four of four and a half in the month of February. And then when you look, that's that's on a year over year basis. On a month over month basis, we're eight and a half, eight point seven percent lower than March. And then consumer confidence, of course, which is a survey, that's down. This is where I mentioned that these these consumers surveyed forty one percent anticipated they would they would get their their jobs back. And then looking on at the growth of the economy, we had been averaging on an annualized basis. So this is the annual equivalent. Every quarter, we've been averaging for the last three quarters around two percent. I'm gonna zoom in on this on this chart so that you can see it a little bit, a little bit better. So we we were averaging somewhere around two percent. You can see through June thirtieth of twenty nineteen, through September thirtieth of twenty nineteen, through December, two, two point one. And then here we have March thirty first, that quarterly number came in at negative four point eight. And and of course, what led the biggest contributor to that negative four point eight number came from consumers, which was at negative five point three where you can see it. And in fact, I'll just zoom in on this chart over on this side and you can see the drop here in the growth. Now, most economists will tell you that most economists will tell you that this means that we we should be in recession territory. You don't know that you're in a recession until you've had two quarters of contraction going on. We're not in the second quarter, we're in the first quarter, but most economists anticipate that that we're going to be in 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 contraction the next quarter, which will fit the the definition of of a recession. So in order to combat all of this, there's been a bifurcated attempt to to stave the economic damage from the effects of COVID nineteen. First and foremost, they've come from the Federal Reserve and through unprecedented Fed intervention. You can see that here, the very top line, I won't go through every single one of these, but I'll highlight the important ones. They lowered the federal funds target rate. That's the rate at which banks borrow from one another overnight down to zero. They dropped it one hundred and fifty basis points, one and a half percent. They did that over two meetings. They've made they made it cheaper for banks to borrow one another to be able to stimulate economic growth. This treasury agency mortgage backed purchases, the second line, this is a straight out of their playbook from the two thousand and eight Great Recession, where they were doing something called quantitative easing. They were purchasing long term assets to prop up those markets. They've expanded that to treasuries, mortgage backed securities, federal agency securities, and now they're including corporate security securities. You can see this primary market corporate liquidity facility, the secondary market corporate liquidity facility. This allows the Fed to purchase corporate bonds to basically prop up corporate America and and allow them to borrow. The good news is that these moves signaled a lot of confidence to investors and that's provided quite a bit of liquidity in the bond markets and corporations, so long as they maintained good credit quality, have been able to borrow directly from from the capital markets, from investors for the most part, rather than having to go to the government. It also included a municipal liquidity facility and then, of course, there were basic liquidity in the form of loans to back the paycheck protection program. The I said it's a bifurcated approach. The second approach came from the government, from the federal government, through fiscal stimulus and through the two trillion dollar CARES Act that you've heard a lot about in the news. This now is now up to two point seven trillion dollars, but you can see where the bulk of the money has gone. Over five hundred billion dollars in cash payments. These are the checks that come to consumers. There there there's also a delayed tax filing, delayed tax payments at the federal level, expanded and enhanced unemployment benefits. For big corporations, there were tax credits and loans over five hundred billion dollars. This included a carve out for the airline industry. Small businesses started out with forgivable loans around three hundred and seventy seven billion. This has been expanded in the last few weeks to an additional four hundred and eighty five billion dollars. So you can see the other aspects to it. There's a lot of money being pumped into the economy and I'm gonna back up one slide and a lot of liquidity being pumped into the financial markets to make sure that that America's businesses stay open and continue to employ people because people's employment are what drive their ability to spend and drive the economy. So what does it mean? It means that with all this stimulus, it has pushed interest rates down to record levels. Just at last note, when you look at here, looking at two year treasuries, if you were to buy a two year treasury investment today and leave your money in there for two years, you will earn zero point one six percent per year for each of those two years. That's how low rates are. That same two year investment back in in the winter of twenty nineteen was paying you somewhere above one and a half percent. So that's you see rates have dropped considerably. And when you look at rates in the chart on the right hand side from three months out to thirty years, you can see where we were a year ago, this dark green line from three months, just charting the the yield of treasury securities from three months on the left to out to thirty years on the right. And then you can see where we were three years or three months ago with the gray line and then you can see how much lower interest rates are today. So why is that important? The reason it's important is because this has a dual impact on on the city's investments. Because the city buys bonds, it means that because interest rates fell, when interest rates fall, the value of your existing investments goes up. And that's been very fortunate for the city. It also means that it provides a great deal of liquidity. If, for example, the city were forced to sell some of its investments to 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 generate cash to cover a shortfall because of COVID nineteen, we would easily be able to do that at gains, at considerable gains at this instance. So it's an important metric and it's one of the metrics that flows into the total return that I'm going to show you. The other impact, of course, there's two ways to make money off of bonds. There's that fair valuation and I just mentioned that the value has gone up, that fair value. The second way is to collect interest income. And though interest income has been strong in the portfolio up to now, it had been coming down because interest rates had been falling even before COVID nineteen. You can see that on the chart on the left hand side. And and interest interest income for the portfolio had been falling. What we're what we're gonna see is that interest income will now fall even faster every time a bond in the portfolio matures. We're forced to reinvest at lower rates available in the market. So your interesting, all that to say is that interest income will be under pressure in the coming years. And though the returns for the last twelve months were very, very competitive, we don't think that they're going to be that like looking like that in the coming years. Let's look at the portfolio and I'm almost wrapped up. This is a portfolio that's designed to provide safety and liquidity, as I mentioned. We manage this portfolio on an actively, on an active basis, actively managed basis. We follow California government code and we follow the city's investment policy. So the very, very strict and very rigid investment environment under which we operate. One of the things that we provide to staff on a monthly basis is a report showing whether the portfolio complies with code or not. And this is an important report for policymakers to know that city staff is maintaining with the help of their advisor, this portfolio in compliance with code and the policy. When you look at the overall portfolio, now this is just the operating portfolio. This is the component that Chandler Asset Management manages for on the city's behalf. That portfolio is worth one hundred and four point eight million dollars. The interest income for the coming year is anticipated to be, as of March thirty first, is anticipated to be two percent down from two oh four. And that's still very strong. We anticipate that that number will continue to come down. Very high credit quality. When you look at the average duration of the portfolio, it's close to two point two point four, two and a half, almost two and a half years, very close to the duration of the benchmark. The benchmark is is a composite of bonds between one and five years. Treasury securities and agency securities, that benchmark is a two fifty five years. I can tell you that since March thirty first, we've moved that to be right on top of two point five five years. And then when you look at the makeup of this this portfolio, you can see that it's very, very well diversified. This is a chart that's straight out of your, it's it's in your treasurer's report. But you can see that we hold approximately a fifth of the portfolio in treasury securities, another close to a fifth in agency securities. Those are very high rated and these are the components in the portfolio that rallied the most. They gained the most. They went up in value the most because investors sought their safety. You do hold approximately twenty seven percent in corporate securities. These came into the portfolio from a position of strength. They've lost a little bit of value, but they're still for most for the most part in in the black. But again, very high credit quality, very well diversified. Now, when I look at returns, and I'm almost wrapped up here, when I look at returns in the portfolio, this number encompasses both interest income and fair value appreciation. It's called a total return. We're not just looking at the yield of the interest income, but interest income and fair value. And and I want to highlight two things. I want to look at returns on a relative basis and on an absolute basis. On a relative basis, meaning when we compare that to the benchmark that we match ourselves against, we did not beat the benchmark for the last three months. And of course, that impacted the since inception number. The inception date was was July of last year. So we haven't, we don't even have a full year under our belt in this portfolio. And the reason that we lagged that benchmark was because this benchmark, you can see it listed down here, is a treasury and agency only benchmark. And as I mentioned, those are the two sectors that rallied the most. Because you have a well diversified portfolio, there were components in the portfolio that did not perform as well. So on a relative basis, you're lacking the benchmark. We anticipate that this relationship will will equalize over time. On an absolute basis, and this is what what I want to emphasize here. So when just looking at that standalone return for the last three months, two thirty one and since assumption, I just want to highlight the return of the last three months of two thirty one. That's just a three month return. If I annualize that return, meaning if I give you the annual equivalent, which assumes that you're earning at two point three one percent every quarter for the next three quarters, that annual return is equivalent to nine point six percent. That's an extremely competitive return for a bond portfolio that's designed for safety and liquidity. The majority of that, of course, a good deal of that comes from from interest income, but the majority of it comes from fair value appreciation. And I think the key things to remember is are that even though staff looks at this portfolio from a budget perspective, they really focus on interest income. But but at the end of the day, both interest income and fair value flow into your financial statements. And that is why staff has given us the mandate to manage both of those aspects of the return. With that, let me let me pop over real quickly. When we include the components of of the portfolio, or I should say of the investment program that that we don't manage because there's investments, there's cash at the bank, there's investments in the state pool as well and various other sources of cash. When you look at the overall portfolio of which we manage about one hundred and four, the overall investment investment program for the city is one hundred and eighty eight point seven million dollars. It's averaging a yield of maturity of one forty four, a far cry higher than what you're seeing in the markets. And again, if I look at the diversification, it's very well diversified. About twenty eight percent is in cash, another thirteen percent in the state pool. Those are your most liquid components and money funds, followed by the assets and the securities. The longer securities are what are driving the returns. Let me stop there. And again, the key takeaways are this is an unprecedented time. The portfolio is built for safety and liquidity and it has performed as expected. There are still dangers to the economy and we're monitoring those very closely and how they might impact the portfolio. But right now you are in a position of strength and if you needed liquidity, you would have all the liquidity you would need out of this portfolio. Let me stop there and take any questions you may have.
Right. Are there questions from members of the council? All right. Thanks, Carlos. This is an information item only for receive and file and appreciate the extensive. This is an was an unusually extensive report given the situation. And I think it's also the first time we've taken up some of the details of our portfolio with with all of the members of the current council. So a useful reset and 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 helpful information. So appreciate that very much. Thanks.
Thank you very much and have a good night, everyone. Stay safe.
All right. Thank you. All right. So with that, now we're going to return to item three, which is the financial update for COVID nineteen impacts and consideration of resolution twenty dash fifty two, approving a waiver of credit card convenience fees for transient occupancy tax payments through January thirty first, twenty twenty one. And on the fourth tribe, Ms. Raper.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. This is a bit longer of a report than just the resolution for T O T. I'll be giving a comprehensive financial update. You did receive a a very long and detailed report in the agenda. So I'm gonna, I have a presentation that's just gonna hit on some of the highlights and then allow for questions or conversation on areas that you'd like to discuss a little bit more. So in order to do that, I am going to share my screen. Very nervous about issues here technically, but we're gonna see if we can make this work.
It'll be fine.
All right.
Between the city clerk, between the city clerk and and my daily teaching with Zoom, we've got this system down. It'll be good.
Well, good. So I don't know that I can see my Zoom changes. So I I hope you're able to see my, are you able to see my slides?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right. So starting with the beginning, the financial report presented tonight, again, is a comprehensive summary of the current financial projections, including the anticipated impacts of COVID nineteen on the city's primary operating funds. This is not a final report. This is not the final budget. It really is just the beginning of a conversation with council for the development of an adaptive budget strategy to guide the city through the present and future impacts. So we'll provide some information on initial mitigation measures in this report, but a lot of work continues between department staff, city management and the budget team to bring a more comprehensive budget workshop before council in the summer to implement some of the measures we discussed today, as well as additional measures that are still being considered and evaluated. So with that, let's make sure I can. All right. So the agenda, you know, the primary operating budget of the city is the general fund. So we are going to spend the majority of the time tonight on that fund. And we'll discuss the revenue expenditure impacts and projections for this fiscal year and next. And we're also gonna look at some of the initial potential mitigation measures and what the long term model looks like before implementing some of those and and after implementing some of those described in the report. But we also provide some details on the tax measure funds, the preschools, parking and utility funds and other areas that are impacted by the pandemic. So those are described a little bit more in detail in the report. And I'll just be providing a brief update on those tonight. So starting with general fund, you will see I've I've used a lot of visuals here. So the general fund is the primary source for revenues and expenditures related to the city's core functions, including public safety, parks and recreation, code enforcement, planning and engineering. The general fund primary revenue sources are property tax and sales tax and they make up a whopping seventy eight percent of the adopted revenue budget for the current fiscal year. The general fund collects the city's portion of property taxes generated from areas that are not in the former redevelopment project area. Measure G, the bridge district, I F D, and then the the enhanced infrastructure financing district. And the property tax is the largest source of general fund revenue at about forty five percent of the annual revenue budget. Luckily for us, we we get a very large percentage of the property tax and property tax revenues are less elastic than some of the other revenues like sales tax, which means that they don't typically move, you know, as quickly or as deeply with the with the economy. And so there and with assessed values for the next fiscal year, they were established January this year before the pandemic really started hitting and before the the public health orders were implemented. So we're not expected to be impacted by the emergency in the short term as much as we could be. The county assessor is not expected to make large, large downward adjustments to the assessed values due to proposition eight unless the current situation carries much further into twenty twenty. Our consultant H D L is monitoring the sales data over the next several weeks and months and will alert us if there's evidence of serious value reductions that could result in some downward assessed valuations. So yes, seeing those those the change in market sales, the change in values, those are pretty, pretty much the impetus for the assessor making adjustments, property adjustments. Today, too, both the when we start to look at the long term model, both the city's consultant and the League of Cities financial expert, Michael Coleman, have both noted that projections, including mass foreclosures, would be overly pessimistic at this time. So when we get to the long term model, you're not going to see that. However, we are keeping an eye on the data and as we get additional data over the next several weeks, that if something's going to happen there, it will become more clear and we can take action and update our projections at that time. So the greatest impact on this revenue source is going to be from reduced property sales in twenty twenty. So as such, we have reduced the supplemental tax and documentary transfer tax revenues in the two year budget. Those are both things that are based on sales to account for the fewer sales transactions. And and to be conservative, we basically said, you know, if we're not going to receive any more than we had received as of the day that we were doing the evaluation as of March. But that's not, that's a little bit more conservative because there are still But that's not, that's a little bit more conservative because there are still transactions taking place. So hoping, and then next year, we've decided, we took them out altogether. And so our projections are probably a little bit more conservative, hopefully, than we're actually going to see the impacts be. So the result is a projected loss of about 1.9 million over the two years. That's 675,000 this year and 1.2 million next year. Additionally, with taking the supplemental and the documentary transfer tax adjustments, we also have received our first half, the first payment, the first installment of property tax for this year. So we updated our projections based on those numbers because those are about 50% of what we would expect to receive for the year. So with the state and local shelter at home orders, many businesses have had to make significant adjustments to how they do business, with a lot of them closing altogether, at least temporarily. And this has resulted in significant impacts to the city's next largest revenue source for the general fund, sales tax. The Bradley Burn sales tax revenues make up 33% of the adopted revenue budget for the general fund. So with the help of our sales tax consultant, Avenue Insights and Analytics, sales tax impacts have been projected for the next several months. We have been sheltered from some of the impacts as the city council adopted a very conservative sales tax revenue budget last year. You'll recall the wayfair legislation, which is requires sales tax be paid for out of state sales within California up to a certain amount. We weren't really sure exactly how that was going to impact the city because we didn't have really good data on those out of state sales since they weren't required to report previously. So in January, our consultant had updated our sales tax revenue projections based on the actual sales transactions they had seen for the previous six months, including what we were seeing coming in from the the wayfair legislation. And we hadn't actually asked council to make any changes yet, but their updated projections in January added a couple million dollars. I want to say a little over a million this year and a million and a half next year to our revenue projections. But since we hadn't made those adjustments, our projected revenue losses from budget are actually much smaller than they could have been. So while projected revenue losses from the increased projections in January are closer to a million and a half this year and 3 million next year, because we hadn't updated our budget updated our budget yet, the projected loss from budget is a total of 2.4 million over the two years, with about 600,000 loss in this year and almost 2 million, 1.9 million expected in 2020, 2021. And then while transient occupancy tax makes up only 3% of the general fund budget, this revenue category is expected to have significant impacts as the social distancing and shelter at home orders have suspended non essential travel. The city of West Sacramento receives about 90% of its TOT revenue from 10% of its total lodging facilities. Many of the motels on West Capitol Avenue cater to longer term residents, and TOT is only assessed on transient occupancy, which is considered less than 30 days. So as a result, TOT revenue is expected to be dramatically reduced in the fourth quarter of this fiscal year. And we've modeled a gradual increase in occupancy and the related revenues over the next couple of fiscal years and have included some increase in the revenues from the two hotels that are currently under construction and expected to come online over the next several months. And while they may come in line, we've also, we've gradually increased the the revenue expectations from those, just given kind of where we are in the unknowns of when when business might or when travel may return to normal. So oops, I just went somewhere. So the expected revenue loss in TOT is about 2.4 million over the two years. So even though this is a much smaller revenue source than sales tax, we're actually projecting the same amount of loss. It's about 826,000 this year and 650,000 in next year. The TOT is paid quarterly with the January to March payments due at the end of April. So as those payments are received, and really as the next quarter's payments are received, we'll have a lot more information as far as how the orders are impacting our lodging facilities and what that might mean for our revenues. And like sales tax, the revenues are received in arrears. They're received on a quarterly basis. So, you know, the the last two weeks of March are where we see the initial impacts. Those payments are due to us along with all of the first quarter. At the end of April, we typically get see those end of April, early May. And then the next quarter, which includes April, May, and June, we won't actually start receiving those payments until the end of July, early August. So getting some good data is a little bit delayed. So we're making a lot of assumptions on on getting these revenue projections for you. Additionally, we have had some of the lodging facilities ask us, they want to make credit card payments for their TOT. We had implemented in, I think, 2017, late 2017, a credit card convenience fee of 3% on credit card transactions. And at that time, a lot of facilities that were paying TOT by credit card stopped doing that because it was a financial impact for them. We have asked, had some hotels ask us if they can make their payments now by credit card, and would we waive that fee to allow them an extra month of cash flows? The alternative, I think, is that we might have seen reduced revenues. We might have been asked to to waive penalties later and receive the revenues later. And so in order to lock those in, the city manager, under his authority granted as emergency operations director, approved that waiver for the first quarter TOT payments. And that is the resolution that we actually have before you tonight, asking the council to ratify that and approve the waiver of the credit card convenience fees for TOT payments through January 31, 2020. The reason I came up with that date is really that we expect to see these impacts through the end of the calendar year. And the October to December quarters payments would be due January 31. And by having an end date of January 31, we might actually get some of the folks that typically pay late to make their payments on time, also helping us to collect revenue. So moving on to the next most impacted revenue source in the general fund, our charges for service make up about 10% of general fund revenues, but they will be impacted quite significantly. The revenues are typically generated from engineering and recreation activities. And while engineering services continue to generate some revenue, we are seeing a little bit of reduction in the in the time that the city hall is closed to the public. And most, if not all, of the expected revenue from recreation activities that are expected from the time the shelter in place order went into effect through the end of the fiscal year are not expected at all. We're we're seeing that the recreation center is still closed. There are still some significant requirements as far as being able to get some of these things back open. And we're not yet in the phase that we can have our summer camp programs and some of those things where we've got a lot of people gathering. So the likelihood is that we won't see any more revenues beyond what we had collected by mid-March. Although if we do, then that's going to be better for us. I have assumed no more revenues since since March, middle of March. So the projected loss for this also 2.4 million. That's interesting that those three revenue sources, all different percentages of our general fund, have the same projected revenue loss over the two year period. It's a million and a half projected loss in this year and about 822,000 next year as a lot of the summer programs bring in those revenues. And we're not expected to have our summer programs this year. So overall, the chart shows each of those categories of revenues, the adopted budget and the projected revenues. And overall, over the two years, we are expecting about 8.7 million in lost general fund revenues. And that equates to about 7% of the revenue budget for the two years. So 3.8 million of that is is expected, a reduction expected this year and about 4.8 million next year. So moving on to expenditures. And I've broken this out by a couple different, couple different categories. So this this slide shows our labor projections, both this year and next year, compared to our adopted budgets. So on a positive note, we're projecting some labor savings of about one and a half million this year. That'll help offset some of that 8.7 million in revenue loss. But we are expecting that we will have additional other post employment benefits costs next year of about a half a million. We had, after the budget was adopted, we had our actuarial report updated. It actually, it resulted in additional annual actuarial determined contributions for this year and next year. And so that one and a half million in savings this year is net of a $500,000 increase in the OPEB cost. And so for next year, we're basically assuming the budget for now. Whatever we budgeted, we will spend plus the 500,000 in OPEB. However, as you'll see, as we get into further into the report, we've got mitigation measures that we're considering that obviously will help us reduce the anticipated expenses for next year. Okay. Next slide. Next slide is CalPERS employer contributions. So one of the biggest impacts that we may see to our expenditures is our CalPERS pension contributions. This isn't new. I feel like I'm doing the same presentation with a different emergency or a different impact. But our CalPERS employer contributions are very much dependent upon everything coming in exactly as CalPERS predicts it to. We know that, you know, when you're looking at long term investments, you you consider 7% per year over 30 years. And so even if you have ups and downs throughout that timeframe, if you average out at 7% per year for your investment returns, then overall, you will end up in the same place. But that does have significant impacts on a year to year basis. And following the the presentation that Carlos gave, there had been quite a bit of volatility in the market, especially before, you know, the last couple of weeks of March. So as of March 31, CalPERS was reporting a 4% investment loss. Since that time, at the end of April, they are now reporting a 1% gain. But I was already very well down the path of calculating what a 4% loss would mean to us and including that in our long term projections and knowing that there could still be a lot of volatility and there's still a month and a half left to the end of the year. We have modeled a 4% loss. And at the time, they told us they had a 4% loss. I modeled a 4% and a 10% loss, just so we could see what that might mean to us. If you recall during the Great Recession 2009, they had a one year loss of nearly 25% of quarter of their portfolio. And that was very impactful for cities and counties, people, members, agencies of CalPERS. That, most agencies at that point went from over 100% funded and 0% employer contributions down to about 60% funded overall. And we've seen our employer contributions increase tremendously since then as they've tried to recapture some of the revenue that was lost during that time and also update their assumptions to make sure that that their models were sustainable long term. So we did project an investment loss of 4%. That's not going to hit us this year. So our CalPERS contributions this year are what they are. Our CalPERS contributions next year are what they are. The way this impacts us, if there is a big investment loss or a lot of changes for this year, that will be included in our next year's actuarial report that will hit our city budget in fiscal year 2122, so in our next budget cycle. But it's big enough and important enough that I think we should talk about it. So looking at the 4% loss scenario, we're looking at overall about $600,000 per year increase over five years, leveling out at about 3 million annually more than what we would have been paying if not for the investment losses. And approximately 70% of that cost is borne by the general fund. The chart, even though it says general fund may not be, and I have to go back and see if this is, if this is adjusted for general fund or if this is the entire thing. But you'll see that the orange lines are the employer contribution, what we would have expected if they'd come in at a 7% return level like they expected. The gray line, the gray bars are the changed or predicted, proposed, projected change in the employer contributions related to a 4% investment loss this year. And you'll see that in the 22, there's a little bit of an increase. 23, there's a little bit more. And and as you go further into these out years, that's where you see it's about 3 million more per year than what we would have otherwise seen. The lines that go across just show the percentage of payroll overall for our miscellaneous and our public safety groups. So this is combining all of the tiers and police and fire, for example, for public safety, just kind of an overall number. But we're currently paying, I think, about 24, almost 25% of payroll for our miscellaneous employees. And that would be expected to grow to a high of about 33.3% of payroll in fiscal year 2627. And for the safety groups, the contributions are currently about 43.5% of payroll overall. It includes the the unfunded liability as well. And those would be expected to increase to about 56.2% of payroll in 2627. And I'm showing 2627 is kind of the high point. You may recall that CalPERS, especially after a lot of the the changes and the impacts of those changes on cities over the last decade, they changed and implemented smoothing models. So what you see is that investment losses in one year aren't automatically 100% impacting the city in two years from now. That would mean a $3 million increase in two years, and that would be very hard to sustain or to even make work. Instead, they phased that in over five years. So you get a little bit of the hurt each year. And then at the fifth year, you were you were phased into where you should be, and then that's your impact for the next 15 years. But every year, those numbers are adjusted and things are smoothed in that way. So and just as a to let you know, I also modeled a 10% investment loss. I don't think that we're predicting predicting that at this time. But if you look at a 10% investment loss this year, we would see a million dollars annually in a million dollars in additional contributions each year for five years, leveling out about 4.8 million a year more once you get to 2627. So we are hopeful that they will continue to have gains. I didn't model 1% gain yet. I can certainly do that and see what the difference is going to be. But I think for now, we wanted to be a little bit more conservative, just to make sure that we are prepared to deal with whatever might come our way. So, okay. The next slide, this is talking about the paid administrative leave that we talked about in a previous meeting. The paid administrative leave is being paid for non essential employees who are unable to work remotely. And it's also paid for schedule adaptations to comply with social distancing. So for example, the police department implemented a revised schedule, three 12 and a half hour shifts. I don't know all the details. And then they get sufficient time off between those shifts to be able to socially isolate in case there was exposure to COVID. By doing that, the hours happen in different pay periods, in different weeks. And and the the difference is made up with paid administrative leave just to allow our officers the time to to isolate between shifts and make sure that we're not overworking them and exposing others if they get exposed. In addition, the corp yard has implemented rotating shifts during the city facility closure to observe social distancing requirements. So on those rotating shifts, we are incurring some paid administrative leave. And then we have a large number of extra help staff and temporary employees, particularly in the Parks and Rec Department, who have also been receiving paid administrative leave. There is a cost control measure related to this that we will discuss later in the presentation. But this chart here just shows the usage by the number of employees. I I failed, obviously, to add legends here, but the bottom axis shows the number of employees and the left side shows the percentage of time the paid administrative leave is used. So this goes through the end of April. And what you can see is about 77% of the employees are using pay or are receiving paid administrative leave for less than 50% of their normal hours. And I think there's even like 100 and there's 126 out of 164 total that are even under below that. So for the most part, we're not seeing a lot of employees or any employees really being paid 100% of the time not to come to work. And as we move forward, we're finding ways to get people back to work, to get people connected remotely and making some adjustments, as we'll discuss later, to some of the the part time and temporary staff that'll help those numbers. And it's important to note, too, that the costs that are associated with the paid administrative leave are actually costs that were budgeted, would have been paid anyway. So it's not an added expense to the budget, even though it is, it's an opportunity cost for sure. Okay. So to sum up the two year budget, again, we've got a total projected revenue loss of about 8.7 million. Total expenditure savings over the two years of 1 million. So we're looking at a net 7.7 million deficit for the two year budget. That includes the one time appropriations approved by council in September of about 4.2 million and planned reserve funding of about 6.2 million in fiscal year 1920. There is about 400,000 of one time expenses in the next fiscal year and about 400,000, 1.4 million was expected for reserve funding. Part of that is about $4 million that that this year was planned to go to the general facilities reserve. And we do have some facilities projects that are planned to be funded by that, including the Fire Station 45 improvements that needed to be done. And then the about 2 point, I want to say 2.1 million to the general fund, general reserve fund. And that was a big, a big contribution. Since we rolled in engineering and planning into the general fund this last year, it did increase the general fund revenues. And so that was the amount that was necessary with our initial revenue budget this year to make sure that we maintained our general reserve at 17% of general fund revenues. The council's adopted a policy to to keep that between 15 and 20%, and we've had it about 17% for the last several years. So again, this this projection includes the COVID revenue losses, but no mitigation measures yet. So with that, if if we did nothing, which of course we're not going to do, this is what our reserves look like. So we would be able to, this is the impact of the reserves on the two-year budget. If we didn't implement any mitigation measures and we incurred that seven point seven million dollar loss, we have enough general fund balance to get us through this year and leave us about three point six million, I believe, for next year. And with the deficit projected for next year, we would fully use the remaining general fund balance and a good portion of the budget stabilization reserve. We'd use that down to about four hundred thousand dollars. But our whole general reserve would remain intact at approximately eleven point one million at the end of next year. And this is just showing where we would be. We'll be talking about mitigation measures and what that might look like here shortly. Okay, I feel like, no, no, I didn't take out a slide. That's later. Okay. So moving out of the general fund, before I get into the some of the longer-term model, I want to talk about just briefly some of the other impacts to other funds. So our district tax measures, these are the sales tax measures that were adopted, Measure E, K, V, and N over the past many years. And like the Bradley Burn Sales Tax, these district tax measures are also expected to be impacted by the shelter-at-home orders. The city adopted revenue budgets for each of the four district tax measures, about three point seven million in revenues this year and about three point eight million next year. Like the general fund sales tax revenue, the projections for these measures were updated in January to be closer to about four million this year and four point one million next year. They were updated by our consultants. They were not updated by council yet. And so since council had not yet updated those projections, the actual impact to these revenues from the adopted budget is much less. It's about thirty-seven thousand this year for each of the four measures and about a three hundred thousand dollar loss for each of them next year, expected. So this chart shows the total expected revenues from the four measures for each of the next ten years, along with the expenditure projections, to show that the tax measure funds should have sufficient revenues to cover their annual expenses and maintain additional balance available for eligible one-time uses. It provided a more detailed ten-year model for each of the tax measures, along with a combined one in the report. So I'm happy to talk about any of those in detail if you'd like. I do have, I do have some numbers, though, for each of them. Measure E is projected to have a surplus of four hundred thousand this year and one point one million next year, increasing to about one and a half to two million each year thereafter. The Measure K funds are the Measure K fund funds the most ongoing operating expenses of the four measures, including some police and fire operations costs, street sweeping and road maintenance positions. And as such, that one will be impacted a little bit more than the other measures. So the Measure K fund anticipates surpluses of about two hundred thousand this fiscal year and next, with small ongoing surpluses growing to about a hundred thousand dollar annually beyond that. And then Measure Measure V doesn't fund any ongoing operating expenses. It was adopted to fund capital costs related to flood improvements and a transit connection between West Sacramento and downtown Sacramento. Measure V fund is expected to generate about four point one million in revenue annually over the next fourteen years. That's an average annual revenue, and it sunsets in fiscal year twenty thirty-four. So before it sunsets, it is expected to generate around fifty-six million for those purposes. That is the reduction, though, from, I think, sixty million is what we were projecting previously before the impacts this year. So even though we may not see significant impacts in the two-year budget, having lower sales tax revenues and having to recover from from those over the next couple of years does have an impact on your on your longer-term projections. So let's see. Measure N is the newest of the four measures. It took effect just over a year ago. It was adopted to fund public safety expenses as well as community investment and inclusive economic development projects. That fund currently contributes to the latest MOU increases for police staff and has a couple of one-time contributions to projects, including the largest one is the Memorial Park ADA Project. That fund is expected to end this fiscal year with about one point four million in available one-time funds, along with an annual capacity of approximately two million thereafter. So in total, the anticipated lost revenues for the four tax measure funds over this year and next year, about one point two million, which would otherwise have been available to fund capital projects and other eligible one-time expenses. And again, there's a lot more detail on those funds in your written report. Okay, I'm going to briefly talk about these because we did provide a lot more detail in your report. The successor agency, Measure G, Bridge District IFD and EIFD, successor agency obligations are funded from our PTTF Real Property Tax Trust Fund, which was created, it's the tax increment that used to flow to the redevelopment agency. With the dissolution of redevelopment, those funds are now put into a trust fund. And they first fund our successor agency obligations. And then any residual revenue from that trust fund is allocated back to the taxing entities. And so our portion of that gets deposited into Measure G IFD or EIFD, depending on the the properties from which the the funds were collected. And they're not expected to be significant impacts to those revenue sources yet, at least related to the COVID emergency. Unrelatedly, the county discovered calculation errors in their AB twelve ninety pass-through calculations dating back to twenty twelve, when the redevelopment agency was dissolved. As a result, the Measure G fund owes funds to the county to be redistributed to the taxing entities correctly for the past three fiscal years. The total impact is estimated about just under a million dollars, and it'll be repaid in three payments over the next two fiscal years. But the tax increment revenue received so far this year in the first installment was already more than we expected to receive for the whole year. So we actually think that even with the first payment in June and even with the potential for reduced revenue revenues from reduced number of property transactions within the city, that we will probably end up better than we expected when we budgeted in these funds anyway. But we will keep an eye on those as our next payment comes in in the next couple of weeks. Utility funds, the impacts are harder to tell on those just yet. The council adopted a waiver for late penalties for water bills, for utility bills, all the utility bills back in April. The penalty revenues account for about fifteen thousand per month per fund. And so we are projecting the loss of those revenues, at least while we have the emergency proclamation in place. And then other impacts are not really seen yet in the revenues. For March, for example, when a lot of those payments were already set up to auto pay, and we had received more this year than we had last year at that time. In the next billing and the next payment cycle, we'll have a much better idea of how many people are perhaps not able to pay their bills. And since we don't shut off by providing the waiver, penalty waiver, that's the way we were able to provide relief to some of those customers. So we'll we'll know a little bit more, at least the water fund next month, and we'll be back in front of you in June for our annual presentation on those, and we'll probably have more information then. And then the city performs infrastructure maintenance on the sewer system. While the SAC Regional Sanitation District provides treatment and related activities, our utility billing staff has been working with regional sand staff on the COVID nineteen relief effort through adjustments to sewer bills. So under the the Regional Sanitation Program, businesses impacted by COVID nineteen and the related public health orders, who are billed by categories, will receive credits based on the severity of the impact to them. Businesses who are billed based on water usage and were impacted by COVID nineteen will be adjusted by recalculating the low water usage, what we usually call the winter average, because the low water usage is usually in the winter months, December, January, February. We calculate that winter average and apply that to those folks. We've recalculated the winter average to include March and April, so that we would include the months that were impacted by COVID. And so we'll be applying those credits based on that new portion in the May twenty twenty bills. The projected lost revenues due to the recalculation of the winter average is expected to be about a hundred thousand dollars. But this year's winter average before the recalculation was about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars more than last year. So it it could even result in a slight gain for the city. We're waiting to see exactly how that pans out. But our customers should see the the relief in their, the business customer should see the relief in their May bills. So moving on to preschool funds, the city's two preschools have been closed since mid-March, eliminating tuition revenue potentially through the end of the fiscal year. The preschools are working on a reopening plan with restrictions, looking at they they need to comply with the social distancing and other requirements. They can only have ten, ten students per class versus, you know, the twenty-four they usually have. And so they're they're looking at either rotating days or half-days or whatever they can do to provide relief to the people, the parents who use it, myself included, and to get some revenue going. So we did provide some very detailed information for the two years in the report. Luckily, those those funds, we've been setting aside money from Measure E to the UPFOR West SAC program for the last several years for the quality preschool program. And a lot of those funds are still there because we've been receiving grant funds, which run out this year, that have been able to help offset some of those costs. So we do have the funds available to fund the deficits that are projected this year and next year, leaving about a hundred thousand dollars in the UPFOR West SAC program. So it looks like at least for the next two years, we'll we'll be okay. Although there is more discussion on the preschools long-term, as you know, we're looking at a lot of other options that may come up soon. And so we'll be talking with the council a little bit more about those in the future. For road funds, gas tax, and SB one, they are expected to be hit significantly as the shelter-at-home orders have resulted in plummeting gas prices and gas consumption, pushing the price per barrel into negative territory for the first time in a very long time, if not ever. So as a result, those revenue sources could be hit up to thirty percent. Those are kind of initial projections. Michael Coleman will be updating those projections based on the governor's May revise. And so we're waiting for his updates to kind of look at what what we're expecting as far as our impacts. We do fund capital projects, and we do have some capital projects that are intended to be funded with those sources over the next couple of years, including the State Streets Road Rehab Project. And so once we have a little bit more information on what we can expect to see for those revenues, we'll be revisiting the the projects to be funded with them and and make sure we can continue to do them, find other funding or or delay whatever the the need may be, but that'll be something that we'll be bringing back to council when we have a little bit more information. And just as a, hopefully, a positive thing, today, this year, we've actually received close to ninety percent of our expected annual revenue allocations in those funds. So future downward adjustments could impact that. But I'm not sure that they would, they would take back money they've already given us. So so it could be a positive for this year with a bigger impact expected next year. Parking fund revenues have also been greatly impacted by the public health orders during the emergency. Parking revenues are expected to decrease seventy-eight percent compared to the prior year during the emergency period. In addition, there are two pending revenue generating parking projects that are no longer expected to be completed this year. Overall, that creates one-time budget savings this year of about two hundred and thirty thousand, while revenue is projected to be about two hundred thousand less than expected. The thirty thousand deficit is easily covered by the fund balance in the parking fund. And a positive on on this note is our enforcement costs are contracted and tied to our revenues. And so as the revenues are reduced, so are our enforcement costs related to that. So River City JPA debt, I I didn't, I didn't provide a little write-up in my notes here, but I did in the report. Without a season, the River Cats are not necessarily collecting a lot of revenue. The the baseball season allows them to collect a lot of revenue. The city of West Sacramento and the county of Sacramento have backstopped their debt for the stadium. And so they have a a payment coming up in November, a debt service obligation payment of about two point six million dollars. It's due in November. The city's portion of that, if they are not able to generate enough revenues to cover that debt service payment, is somewhere around eight or nine hundred thousand dollars. I don't have it in my notes right now, but we have that budgeted and funded. So and we're we're looking through a lot of other options. We're working very closely with Jeff Savage, looking at utilizing debt service reserves if appropriate, looking at other ways that we might be able to fund this. We've even looked, considered whether refinancing or restructuring that debt could help to reduce the the annual payments. Refinancing right now doesn't really look like an option because of the long escrow period, but restructuring could be an option. And so we're we're really looking at at all options to figure out how we can set us up for success going forward, how we can fund that payment this year if if the River Cats are not able to fund it themselves. But if, in the case that it would come to the city and we'd have to pay our portion, we've already reserved that amount and appropriated appropriated that amount. So the council has approved that appropriation in the budget, and we were prepared for this, even though we didn't expect it to happen. All right, I feel like I'm getting closer. So hopefully, we can move on to a conversation here soon. Emergency expenses. So we haven't really reported to council yet on the emergency expenses incurred so far. I did provide in the report the types of expenses that we are incurring, including some of the housing of homeless in the motels before Project Room Key got off the ground, part-time and overtime costs incurred for staffing who are working related to the emergency. And then a lot of supplies, so masks, sanitizing equipment, additional costs for our security patrols at the community community center and for additional janitorial sanitizing costs for the facilities that are still open with a lot of people. The police department is one. So those types of costs are all eligible for reimbursement, oh, including a lot of costs related to getting all of our staff working remotely and making sure we can continue to run and function while we're not in our desks physically. So this chart shows the total expenses by how they will be funded. So FEMA reimbursement is expected to be seventy-five percent of the eligible expenditures. The California Disaster Assistance Act covers seventy-five percent of the remaining, twenty-five percent, which is about eighteen point seven five percent. And then the city's portion is about six point two five percent. We do have some donated resources, so we received forty-eight hundred masks that are valued at a little over seven thousand dollars that we are able to count towards the city's match. And after writing this report, I've heard from some other departments that they've actually received some additional donations that will be tracking and valuing. And to the extent possible, we could potentially fund the entire city portion of the eligible expenses by donated resources matched, so not out of our own pocket. Then we have some ineligible costs. I I want to say, looking at my chart, hard to tell, but I think it's about eighty, eighty, no, eighty-eight thousand is our total portion right now. That includes the city portion of the eligible costs. Some of the ineligible costs are like the twenty-five thousand dollar contribution to the COVID Relief Fund. Even though I'm kind of pushing on that, I I don't think that that's going to be an eligible cost for reimbursement. And then there are some costs, like getting DocuSign and things up so that we can continue to work and route contracts and all of that stuff remotely. We can only charge the portion that is needed for the during the emergency. And right now, I've assumed, I think, about three months of that. So those will be revisited going forward, but overall, it looks like the majority of our costs are going to be funded by reimbursements from FEMA and CDA, and our portions hopefully will be covered primarily in donated resources. All right, so now we're getting into the good stuff. So the general fund long-term model, and again, this is really kind of hard to do. It was hard enough to predict the two years. But to predict the recovery of revenues beyond this year and next year was even more difficult. A lot of folks say that it's going to be a like a V-shaped or a Nike swoosh recovery. So in some of these, I did include some significant recovery in twenty-one, twenty-two, for example, for TOT and charges for services. You know, our summer program should be back to normal. Hopefully, travel will get back to normal. There is some, there's been some guidance on occupancy levels for TOT actually taking two or three years to come back. And so we've tried to be kind of conservative there, but also in a couple of those areas, I included like twenty to twenty-five percent assumptions for the increase in those revenues for twenty-one, twenty-two. Overall, though, because they're very, they make up a very small percentage of our general fund budget, overall, it results in a six percent general fund revenue increase. But what this shows is before any mitigations, the green bars are the ongoing expenses. The blue over here are our one-time expenses that were approved for the two years, which, by the way, all of those are being evaluated to determine, do they need to move forward now? What's the status of them for those who that haven't gone? Can we move them out? Can we fund them elsewhere? Is it is it really needed? So we're doing a review of all of those appropriations to determine the best way to move forward with those. And then the yellow bars are the reserve contributions that were budgeted, which, by the way, if our revenues are projected to decrease, the seventeen percent of those revenues is going to be a smaller number than when we budgeted, and so we'll see some savings there, as you'll see in the next model. So those are expenditures, and then the red is our So those are expenditures and then the red is our expected revenues over the ten years. And what this shows is that we're expecting to see deficits if we do nothing through fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. Beyond that, you can see a little bit of yellow up here. I'm assuming that any revenues over expenditures in those, in those years would be used to rebuild our reserves. And I do, I want to say in front, I don't have it right in front of me, but no, maybe I do. Let's look. The next slide actually shows what the impact to the reserves would be with this model. So this shows we've got general fund balance here, nineteen, twenty, that would be available about three point six million to fund the deficit the next year. That would entirely go away, entirely be used in twenty-twenty-one if we didn't take any action. The budget stabilization reserve would go from a little bit over two million down to nothing. And then we'd start dipping into the gray, which is our general reserve. Right now it's funded at about eleven million, and it's at seventeen percent, which is the, the policy level. The purple dotted line shows the change in the percentage of revenues that the general reserve would be if we did nothing. So again, these are really rough projections, but what this shows us is that we would essentially use all of these reserves by the time we get to about twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six. And then we'd need about, I think it's one point two million more. So we would deplete all of those reserves and need an additional one point two million. Luckily, the city is not just going to do nothing. And, oh, what did I do with my other slide? We have some other reserves that is not showing up in my slide now, but we have other general fund reserves that have been set aside for other purposes. So for equipment replacement, for facilities, infrastructure, rehab and replacement. And so if we did nothing, we would still have about fifteen million dollars, I think, in those reserves at the end of the ten-year period. So even though the city is set up very well to be able to do nothing and kind of see what happens, that's not the approach we're going to take, but the council should feel very confident in the fact that we, that you've made very good decisions, set aside money for a lot of different purposes and really made it so that something like this is not something that we need to have a knee-jerk reaction to, but that we can really evaluate and take appropriate mitigation measures. So speaking of that, potential mitigation measures, the things that we're looking at now right off the bat, five percent budget reductions across the board, across all funds in the operations and maintenance budget line. For the general fund, that's about three hundred thousand annually. So we're looking to at how that might impact the different departments and that number could grow. But right now, immediately, we're asking folks to cut five percent of their budgets and that should not impact staffing or services, hopefully at that level. We're also implementing a partial hiring freeze and position review. There are several positions that, that are vacant at the moment. Our HR division has done a lot of work trying to figure out, you know, and work with departments to determine which of those positions are essential, necessary? Do we need to move forward and fill now? And so for any that we're not necessarily considered, well, I think any that are moving forward, a justification for why that position is needed and why it needs to be filled now would be provided to the city manager and he would sign off on those. But we are with the vacant positions that we have now, including the three vacant director positions that are currently filled on an interim basis. If we kept those all vacant through the next year, it'd be almost a million dollar savings next year. And I think that it's about half and half between the department head positions and other positions. This is not something that we're necessarily doing. It's just one of the things that council could consider as far as the department head positions. On the other positions, there's inevitably going to be people leaving, people coming. And so even if the positions that are vacant now are not the same positions that are vacant a year from now, we find, think that it'll be pretty easy to maintain and hit that target savings. Additionally, we talked earlier about the extra help staff receiving paid administrative leave. They've all been provided letters letting them know that the paid administrative leave is going away effective May fifteenth. With the exception of, there are some staff, ACES staff that are still funded by ACES grant funds that the school district and their, their granting authority have confirmed will continue through the end of the scheduled school year. And so I believe the HR is looking at two rounds of, of these. Those positions will continue to be paid, paid administrative leave because we're getting reimbursed for that amount and it's not an impact to the city. But for any extra help staff who are receiving paid administrative leave now, that will go away. Those employees are able to apply for unemployment and between now and the end of July, they would probably make more on unemployment than they will from the city. In fact, we've done an evaluation to ensure that everybody's eligible and, and that it wouldn't necessarily be to their detriment if we stopped paying the paid administrative leave. And the savings related to that action is, is expected to be about two hundred thousand dollars. In addition, in the long-term model, I've included a vacancy assumption, which we haven't done in the past. But if you look at our budget to our actual for labor expenses each year, we always have some savings there, like the one point five million this year. If I include a vacancy assumption of about two percent each year in the, in the long-term model, that's a savings of about seven hundred thousand annually that I think is very, very easily going to be met just through attrition, the time it takes to recruit and get new folks on. And as you know, a lot of the, the vacancies are typically in, in the police department that has trouble hiring sometimes. And so I think we'll be able to meet and potentially exceed that savings. So there are other things that are not included in the model that I just wanted to throw out there, things that we're looking at. The general fund, council approves a general fund contingency for equipment and structures and ground maintenance each year of about two hundred thousand dollars. That is not always spent. I think, you know, we've had to dip into that when we've had a fallen tree or something that we didn't budget for. Or for example, when we needed additional storage for the body camera videos, watch card storage this past year. And so we, we do use that sometimes, but, but we could cut that right off the bat and save two hundred thousand dollars and just come to council if something comes up that we, we need to consider. The council also has a strategic priority contingency of two hundred thousand dollars in the general fund that is yet to be tapped this year and it is budgeted for next year. I did not include the reduction of those contingencies in the long-term model. In addition, we've got CIP projects and one-time appropriations that are to be funded by the general fund and the general facilities funds over the next two years. And it's probably somewhere around fifteen million in those one-time projects that we are evaluating all of those and could see a reduction here. You're most likely going to see a reduction here, either moving some of those out or finding another eligible and appropriate funding source to save some of the general fund. So these are all things that we are continuing to evaluate and we will be, bring back to you at a future meeting. So looking at the long-term model with, with the reductions, and this is with very few reductions. This is the, the labor furloughs, the vacancies, savings, vacancy assumptions and paid administrative leave going away and the hiring freeze. What this shows is the orange lines are the original expenses, the gray lines are the reduced expenses and the blue line is the revenue. This still includes the one-time budgets that are approved this year that I just talked about. We're evaluating all of those, so you're likely going to see this reduced quite a bit. But what this shows in this model with just minor changes, the five percent reduction in the vacancies, for example, is that you're, we would expect to see a deficit through twenty-four, twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And then we start seeing surpluses after with about a million dollar per year surplus in the last three years. So it definitely is a better picture than the previous model, the do-nothing model. But a couple of things to note here. Every day I think of something else that I didn't have in this model a week ago, two days ago. So for example, we are updating our cost allocation plan and doing a new fee study. The cost allocation plan is drafted, it's being reviewed. I took a look at it as I was pulling this together to see what the impacts could be to the general fund. The impacts are very, very slight. It's a, it's a much more accurate and, and better, I, I would say a better methodology for allocating costs appropriately. And so it's a very, very slight, like twenty-five thousand dollar increase to the general fund. However, the general fund has historically also picked up any allocations to the tax measure funds and to the grant funds. We've got some public safety grants where we charge officers that are not able to pick up administrative overhead and so the general fund pays those. If we, if the general fund is going to continue to pay the allocations for the tax measure funds, that's about a seven hundred thousand dollar a year impact that isn't included. Now, keep in mind, it's a draft model, we're still reviewing and going through and making our final changes. But seven hundred thousand a year is big and that's not in this model. It also doesn't include annual public safety vehicle replacements that are estimated at about a half, half a million dollars a year. This year, the council approved those replacements out of the general equipment fund. It's something that we need to consider going forward. And, and we're also, as part of the facilities, vehicles and equipment master plan, looking at a long-term model replacement program and how we would fund that. And so those are all things that would be brought back at later time and are not included in this model. So as the model continues to be revised, obviously, we've got better projections, better information. And then I keep thinking of these things, we're going to make sure we can kind of include everything in here. And when we come back to council in the next couple of months for a budget workshop, this, this may look very, very different, including a lot more savings, proposed savings from additional mitigation measures. So with this model as presented, this slide shows the impact on the reserves. So rather, we, we would still plan over the next two years to utilize the general fund balance. But with some of those mitigation measures, the reductions, our budget stabilization reserve would actually last a little bit longer, we wouldn't draw that down until twenty-one, twenty-two. And then we would dip into the, if no other mitigation measures were implemented, we would be dipping into the general reserve a little bit. This purple line again shows the percentage of the general fund reserves. So with the surpluses we would show in the last few years, we wouldn't quite get back up to the seventeen percent policy level, but we get close. And I think the lowest, the lowest percentage of general fund revenues this reserve would be at is nine percent in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So in the previous model, it actually went below zero. But this, with the changes that we've included in this model, it actually drops to about nine percent, which I think is equivalent to about a month and a half of expenses. So, and then it grows back up to about fifteen percent of general fund revenues in the last year of the model, using the assumption that the surpluses would be used to regrow the reserves. So, oh, so I took the, I left the wrong slide. This, this one, I took out the, the, the wrong one previously. This one shows what those reserve balances would be with the other reserves that I mentioned, the rehab and replacement, the facilities and the equipment. And it shows that we have a lot more reserved for other purposes, but available if needed than just in the general reserve. So next steps, at this point, we are just going to continue plugging along, updating our forecasted revenues and expenditures, looking at additional mitigation measures. Reviewing, you know, we talked about the one-time, reviewing the one-time, the, the reserve allocations, the one-time CIP and other appropriations. But we're also kind of dusting off and looking at what kind of measures did we implement during the Great Recession? Are those things that are still available to us? Do they make sense during this time? Is it something that, you know, if this continues to go and, and we see bigger impacts than we're seeing now or if we see impacts that might change our, our forecast for property taxes, for example, are there other, are there other measures that we had implemented before that we might need to dust off and bring back? So we're evaluating all of these things and continuing to update all of these projections on a regular basis. And we will be returning to the council in June to talk about utilities for sure and, and probably shortly thereafter with a, a bigger budget workshop and another update. So I feel like I've been talking all night, I'm actually done. With the exception of, I want to remember that we have a recommended action to adopt our resolution to approve the waiver of credit card convenience fees for TOT payments. But with that, if you have any questions or discussion, I'd love to have that with you.
All right, thank you, Roberta. Please make sure you get a drink, rehydrate for a moment. Thanks for the really extensive report. I think we're very fortunate to have you and your team and of course, your colleagues among the the executive team as well in just the Herculean effort that's been put together to be, to prepare such a comprehensive and deep and thoughtful analysis and set of projections and beautiful children and.
I can't figure out how to stop sharing my screen.
Yeah, so just, this was an excellent report, both, both completely comprehensive and also very accessible and transparent and understandable, both for the council and for members of the community who may have at least read through some of it. So thank you very much for the work that's been done. I do want to emphasize this is the, the, we, the council will be making a budget, right? So the, it's, the, the model, the budget model, and I want just some caution because the long-term model isn't the budget. So as I was, as I'm hearing the descriptions of things like the charging the tax funds for overhead expenses as an example, I, I hope not to see that come back as, to not do that was going to, you're now going to have to cut seven hundred thousand dollars worth of other stuff. The budget is the budget, the council budget is the budget, the model is a tool, but the model doesn't become the budget now from which all changes occur. And I think that's going to be particularly important as we think about what the process is that we undertake with it. Because I do, the other thing I do, I doubt we're going to be in a position just after tonight's conversation to say, hey, go ahead with the model and just bring us the implementing action items. You know, a couple in June and a couple in July, maybe a workshop in August or something like, I don't think that's going to be sufficient. We're just, we're getting, wrapping our heads around this tonight. And so we're going to need to continue to be doing real policymaking and real budgeting at the council level. And these are, these are, these are, is all the correct information that we need and the tools. So thank you. I want to reemphasize that, you know, council and the community are going to play a role in thinking, thinking this through. I, I, I think that's particularly important because I know, I've said this a few times, but there are at least three, three factors that are at play here in financial planning. And I've only, but I'm, I'm the only one that's been on the council for two recessions, but Mr. Liddesman was here for the full length of the last one as well. And in each case, we've experienced at least two, maybe three dimensions to the fiscal challenge. And the first is, is the, the challenges that you've laid out very clearly and, and deeply tonight. So the estimates and the forecasts about our current, our current revenues and what, what the, what the best forecasts are for some of those sources from our sales tax consultants and, and, you know, the, the League of Cities Financial Consultant on other matters. So taking a look at what's happening to our, our finances in the current, in the current environment, projected forward in the current environment, based on what we know about shocks and recessions and other, other effects. And that is an enormous effect. And as, and as this report shows, those effects are significant for us. They aren't the same depth as Los Angeles and Cleveland and Santa Barbara and even other cities, some other cities in our region are facing. They're, they're a cause for action and for serious, you know, for serious policy consideration. But that's one set. The second set are the, are the changes in the broader economy. Because this isn't just a recession repeated. In the same way, the last recession was a specific real estate-related recession where we saw greater property tax effects than some others. And the one before that was the dot-coms where we saw this, you know, significant effects on income taxes and capital gains at the state level to trickle down. This one has the, this, we're, we're still in this one. And we all, you know, there are so many possibilities about fundamental changes to the economy. You know, a twenty percent unemployment with a large number of people teleworking or, or not working and contemplating those arrangements, staying, whole sectors of the economy being shaken up, whether it's, you know, stadiums or the airlines or others that are, that may not return in the same way that, that we've, we've thought about. Things like place, right? You know, that, that there's been an urban renaissance in the last decade or two. As folks have said, I want to live closer to, you know, urban services and amenities. And maybe that changes if you don't, if you're not working in those places. Or I'm, I'm getting my, taking my children to childcare near my office, but I'm not going to my office anymore. So that childcare center doesn't exist, doesn't need to exist. Right, the, the changes in the, in the broader economic landscape that will affect us, but not in traditional ways and not, not ways that we can possibly forecast today. The only thing that we can forecast is that it's a significant amount of uncertainty about the fundamentals of the economy, some of which we don't, we've never even questioned before. That's a whole nother set of, that's a whole nother set of risk and uncertainty that we cannot model. So, but, but that is very, very real and may have very profound effects. The third is the, is the effect of the, of intergovernmental changes. And, you know, I've, I've highlighted this one, you know, virtually every week, which is that in, in each of the last two recessions, the state's response to the recession has hit our, our finances as hard as the recession itself. In the last recession, with changes to some of the taxes and fees, but especially with the wipe, with a complete elimination of redevelopment, the impact of that was, was as large as the impact on our property and sales taxes from the recession by itself. In the prior time, the ERAF and the property. In the prior time, the ERAF and the property tax swaps and the sales tax transfers and the booking fees and so many other things did the same thing. The dot-com recession was replicated in terms of fiscal impact on the city in, in essentially the same magnitude by state government. So, so, so it's, for me, it's useful to think about what you presented tonight is essentially, potentially, one-third of the impact that we may be grappling with, and very little of the uncertainty that we may be grappling with. With, so the good news is that if this report were showing us in, in, in major trouble, we'd really be in crisis mode, because those other areas have the potential, are just so unknown and so uncertain, we cannot plan for them. This, what I, what I think is most encouraging about the report tonight is both your assessment about where we are, which is a problem, but not a catastrophe, and the potential solutions and measures that you've outlined tonight, that we might employ in order to minimize the damage from that, at least gives us a, a more solid foundation to stand upon as we deal with the coming uncertainties from those other two effects, in terms of the economy, the larger economy and, and state government, just to be, to be blunt about it. So, but what that also suggests then is that we, that we need to exercise a lot of humility about our, our, our confidence in our future position, not because of any, not because of our existing position today, which is solid, but because the range of uncertainty is just, is just so high. And so, I mean, it can be tempting to walk away from this presentation, say, okay, it's handled, it's done, we're in good shape. And, and especially because where possible, you've taken the most conservative assumptions and, and applied to the model, which is absolutely appropriate. But it's just an important reminder to us that, that we also have to plan for, for the, for the potential of that dramatic uncertainty in, in those other domains. Because although the, the shape of it's uncertain, the, the, the likelihood of something of that magnitude, especially on the governmental side, is very, very high, and we've experienced it in every single recession since we became a city. So I have comments about some of the specifics and questions as well, but let's, let's go to members of the council first. Are there members, Councilmember Roscoe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Roberta. This lengthy presentation was, it was great. You know, obviously, the, the content wasn't always the best to hear, I mean, that's for everybody, but your preparation really did shine through your work tonight, and I thank you. Tonight, hearing that, you know, I appreciate more than ever acts by this past council to build the, the fiscal stability of the city. And I, you know, the fact that there have been, the, the reserves have been built up to the point that where they are and that the general fund has been protected to the extent it has. And I mean, and that's given the fact that there's all these wonderful things that we of course want to spend our money on, but to exercise that restraint over the last years, even prior, especially prior to when I even joined this council, and to understand that and why it's so important right now. I mean, that's exhibited by your presentation. So I just really feel like underscoring the importance of, of keeping those healthy reserves and, you know, as close to the, the 20% of, you know, the revenues as possible, even despite the fact that we're going to be employing mitigation efforts. And I imagine even mitigation efforts that are more expansive than the ones we heard tonight, I'd be interested in, in hearing those, so that way we are adequately positioned for a future that's so unknown. I do have questions. You know, the, the, you said a lot tonight, and I know today, I didn't give a presentation on it, but the Regional Sanitation Board met today, and, you know, they are looking at, for the first, we, we discussed the first of several transactions and a whole effort of debt restructuring with respect to several bonds. And, you know, those were, the efforts there are to keep the rates low and to reduce debt and the cost of the debt portfolio, but, you know, the, the debt can, restructuring with respect to the Stadium Finance Authority, which I was on last year, that, you know, right now, taking advantage of any potential, the low rates that are pretty much the lowest in recent history. But I support the, the transit, the TOT waiver of interest rates for credit card fees. I think if there's anything we can do to encourage the payments by the motel owners, that makes it easier, then that has my support. And as for some of the mitigating factors, I just wanted to ask a few questions. The first is, I wanted, and I'll ask all the questions, and perhaps we can, you know, those that you can't answer, maybe we could get, you know, some answers, but I think, I wanted to know about the complexion of staff reductions that we were considering. I, I'm gathering that a lot of the, and I might be in error, so please just tell, but these would be the temporary workers, say, for example, at the rec center, who might be seasonal, which is, for example, sports band or their summer camps. I mean, I just, you know, at some point, would love to know what, what that looks like, who are folks who are going to be, you know, the, the staff that are gonna be reduced, and approximately how many, if you know that? The others are with respect to O and M, the 5% reduction, what does that look like in reality? And what would be on the cutting board at, at 5%? Also, with respect to childcare, I know we've talked about this at length at several different meetings, but what considerations are, and maybe we don't know that answer now, but has this been a consideration, an increase in the tuition, as undesirable as we would want that to be, because we want to make sure that preschool is available to any and all West Sacramentoans who can take advantage of the opportunity, but I know that increases would hit different populations and different clients or parents in different ways. And there are some folks that can increase, whereas there are others that absolutely cannot. And so to the extent that we're considering, I would rather be an increase in areas instead of, of reduction of, of services. Although I know that the reduction of services has to naturally occur because of COVID and, and the need to social distance. So, yeah. So I don't know if that was a question or a comment or a question or what, but in any case, I just wanted to put that out there. So the other two questions, if you had any kind of insight, that would be great.
Sure. So, O and M, what does this look like? I'm gonna take that one, because I think the other ones, Tracy, our Parks and Recreation may be able to jump in and talk about the preschools and some of the other impacts on the summer programs. But on, on our O and M, we're looking at 5% just in the O and M line items, which includes things like supplies, consultant services, travel, training, those types of things. The likelihood is that even though there's gonna be training and we want to keep our staff trained, there's probably not gonna be a lot of travel for a while, and so a lot of those, those costs will be cut without any impacts at all. But because we haven't, each department is working through what those are gonna be and what, what the easiest cuts are gonna be for them. And so we don't have a full list of what those are yet, but, but I think at 300,000 annually in the general fund across several different departments, they're probably going to be less impactful, and it's, and certainly less impactful now than they would have been a year ago, because where a lot of departments were having to stick within their regular, their same budgets year over year, we did make a, a good adjustment last year for increased water and sewer and utilities and those types of things. And so I think there are some things built in. But our, our initial thought is probably it's gonna be a lot of travel, that probably wouldn't take place anyway. And then where departments may have some other things that they wanted to do that they can potentially wait on. So I don't have a lot of details on that, but that's what our, our thought is. As far as the staff reductions, the temporary workers, again, a lot of those are in parks and recreation. So if, if that's okay, I'm gonna hand it over to Tracy, who can potentially respond to that and the, the childcare issues.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So a lot of the reductions in parks and recreation are related to staff that work at facilities that are currently closed. So there are recreation center staff, community center staffing that helps support active aging, although we, we have kept some essential staff on active aging sparks programming so that we can provide virtual offerings to those demographics. We have some seasonal park maintenance staff. We obviously are not, we do not have restrooms open right now. Our play equipment is closed, and so we had an opportunity there to reduce some of the maintenance responsibilities in our actual parks. And some of our seasonal staff that have worked in other programs or facilities that are closed have actually offered to switch over and help maintain our parks. So you'll see a few of those part-time staff now helping out with maintenance.
Thank you, Tracy. I, I did get a memo this week that said that a lot of the downtown streets folks are going to resume a modified schedule starting May 18th, and with several different safety measures in play for not only their own safety, but the safety of the community as they go out and perform their beautification efforts, to the extent that their efforts can be expanded in any way that could supplement some of the efforts for parks. And I mean, that's not my call, but I'm wondering if we could explore, maybe that, you know, there are any cleanup efforts for, you know, folks that wouldn't necessarily be there, but they could be of assistance. I know that they'll be available.
Of course, that's something we can look at.
Thank you.
And, and then Tracy, are you also able to jump in on the childcare? I know the increase in tuition, you've definitely got some feedback related to that.
Yes. Well, there's, there's always that challenge of finding the sweet spot with increasing tuition and then enrollment drops as a result of that. So we did have an increase in our tuition about a year and a half ago. We try not to increase tuition more than once every two years. So we're at the market rate right now, and we just recently issued a survey out to our preschool families to better understand interest and need for space this summer, hoping that we can plan for a reopening in, you know, not too distant future. And once we understand what that, that need is, we'll be able to develop some programming to help meet those needs. So it can be alternating full-day programs, half-day programs every day of the week, just based on what our families need.
Thank you, Tracy. I've voiced my concern about, I mean, at the time that my children were at the learning ladder, it was very, very affordable in comparison to other options being held at other private childcare centers and, and at a complete and extraordinary level of service, when you have three instructors who are accessible per child, per classroom, and yet the, you know, the person that's paying the bill, the parent, is, you know, it was, is very affordable and a steal, in fact. But I had always thought that, you know, to the extent that we could provide a sliding scale or some type of scholarship or tuition assistance to those in our community who are in most need, that way, there would be some equity in that we would be able to provide those services to the, you know, the neediest kids in our community, because this is a high level, you know, of services. But I mean, this is obviously a conversation that could be held at another time, but I, I just, I'd love to see the program, and I know that we had talked in the past about, you know, different locations and whatnot. So with that, I appreciate the feedback.
Right. Thank you. Other questions or comments from members of the council? Councilmember Barrera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Roberta, and your entire team for this comprehensive report on what is going on with the budget. And I really appreciate, you know, you understanding that it is in flux, considering that, you know, we have to still figure out what's gonna even happen at the federal level, which I have seen that there is, you know, under HR 6800, several billions of dollars that is proposed for local governments and including like 125 million, billion for a modified CDBG funding going to cities. And that's for this year, and then another 125 billion for the out year. And so I'm, you know, hoping maybe with the passage of that, that'll be taken up this week, that we can, you know, further refine what our budget outlook looks like as we move this forward. I do have a few questions and a few thoughts on what I've, you know, what, what I've heard. And the question would be on the KALPERS, you know, the information that you provided, you said you would like some more thought, you know, more thought and discussion about that. And I just wanted to get a little more feedback from you on specifically what that is, if that is something we need to take into consideration for an increased share. Just, I'm speculating, I'm not really sure exactly what that, what that was. And then on the general facilities fund, that, you know, I did really appreciate that being established and maintaining a priority of what it is we need to, you know, to support the infrastructure of our city. So you did reference that there, you know, vehicles and things like that were not included. And we've been through a number of years, as been described, you know, with recessions, and some things are becoming outdated. And so I just want to make sure that we provide our essential workers with all the tools and resources they need as, as a form of prioritization, and taking a look at that in, in, you know, future discussions. And also in the childcare side, the governor did allocate 50 million to provide early education and 50 million for PPE. And I looked into it during the course of the day, just to see if it includes preschools, and it does include preschools. So what, what we need to do is put in a request for that funding, if we haven't already. And included is a CCDBG funding. There's 350 million statewide, where we'll find out in the May revise what exactly is going to be happening, you know, as far as an allocation of that funding out to local government, I mean, to, to early childcare. So preschool is also included in that. That, the reason why that's pretty important is because since we do have to cut the, the ratio of those being served down to by 50% for the social distancing, my, my concern is, it's going to, you know, burden the cost on essential workers like yourself. It's going to double the cost. And I'm really concerned that some parents are not gonna be able to afford that, and it'll impair their ability to go to work. So to the extent that we can, you know, do what we can to supplement, and it is included, CCDBG is included, I think, until 2022, to make sure that we can calculate those costs and we can draw down that, that particular funding source to backfill that. And just make sure that they also have on the PPE to sanitize and keep everything clean to, we can calculate what that cost is. I know we probably have an idea, but just being able to put it down on paper, because this is an ongoing process for us. And taking a look at, you know, other reductions that you are considering, the furloughs, you know, just, I know in trying to assist others, you know, people that I've interacted with and even, even constituents, EDD is not the easiest system to navigate. And I've tried to help somebody who's Spanish-speaking and it crashed, and that person has still not been able to get through to submit an application. So just to the extent that who we, who we are furloughing is able to receive all the technology, all the support, so that they don't find themselves, you know, weeks and weeks trying to figure it out, they can receive a supplement of $600, but I think that is supplement sunsetting as well at some point. So just to the extent that we can provide, you know, the additional support, trying to do an EDD application on the cell phone is really hard. I don't, I don't see it happening. But, so, you know, I don't know what we can do to help them in that way, but if we can be creative in, in providing that support. But I do understand that we can't continue to feed administratively. And in taking a look at the hiring freeze, I, I don't want to impose that on our essential workers. And the 5% across the board, 'cause I did hear across the board, but I, I was under the assumption that it was not including essential workers. So just, it, it may be that we do reduce some costs that they don't need and that, that helps, and they're contributing and contributing their 5%, and that's great. I, I'm very appreciative, because I know that's hard. But just to the extent that they have all the resources they need to perform their work, that for me is extremely important, especially in this time, when everybody, you know, I read that the, here in the police officers took on extra 12-hour shifts, that's a huge strain. And that, that for me, it could be like a public safety issue if, if they're, you know, you know, just physically worn out. you know, just physically worn out. And so I don't want to put that much of a strain, but I'm glad that they've stepped up and contributed to this rotation so that they can have the social distancing. And I applaud our police officers for doing that and thank them very much for that, for that workload that they carried on to make this happen. So just wanting to, you know, look at how we can establish mitigation in the out years, you know, since we are still trying to figure out, you know, based on what the governor assessed, being a $54 billion budget impact. We never anticipated it was going to be that huge. But that's taken into consideration, what we, like us, were funded in the beginning of the year and then unanticipated huge reductions in sales tax revenue, income tax revenue. And so I think we're still having to navigate these uncharted waters of a, of a major recession moving forward. And I just want us to be cautious as we move forward, but also be prepared to, you know, show, you know, support our core and, you know, our infrastructure services as we move forward. And if that, you know, just preserve those workers who are doing the job on the front lines, you know, our public safety and, you know, public works, they're, they're huge in what I see, what we need here in West Sacramento. So just wanted to provide that. And then also maybe continue to speak with you on the side as, as I look and dive into this a little more. Thank you, Roberta.
Sure, absolutely. I'm, I'm always available and would love to, to, to talk more about any ideas you have or, or make sure that the information that I'm presenting is clear. I just want to be very clear, even the mitigation measures that, that were presented in this report, those are not things, we're not moving unilaterally to do anything. And the, these are things that we've identified, said, hey, we want to look at how the departments come up and let us know what would a 5% cut to your O and M look like? It's 5% to just an O and M line item, not including labor. So that is definitely separate. At this point, we're not asking people to cut people. However, we are asking people to look at their budgets creatively and figure out, you know, in a time like this, it really forces us to look at how can we be more efficient? What could we do better? Maybe we wanted these people, you know, when we knew we had some money, but we can do things a little bit differently now. And so we are asking folks to give us all of their ideas about how they might be able to structure their budgets a little bit better. And for the 5% cuts, we're asking folks to identify for us, what would you cut? What does that mean as far as impacts to your people, to your services, to your ability to do your jobs? And then all of those are going to be brought back in front of council. So what I provided today were just ideas of things that we're looking at, what it, what it might be able to save us if we implement some of these things. But none of those things are, are moving forward without council direction and approval. So when I talk about coming back for a, a budget update, and I think sooner rather than later, a budget workshop, we're looking at really examining and evaluating all of these different measures and some others to determine what makes sense, what impacts those are going to have. And then we'd be presenting them to council for council to weigh in and give us the final determination on those. So certainly not, not, you know, moving forward in any way without your support and input. As far as your first question on the CalPERS, oh, thank you for the information on the local grants. We'll definitely look into those and see, you know, what might apply to us and how we might be able to utilize those. You know, the, the comment about childcare cost doubling, of course, scares me a little bit because you know, that's something that was, is will certainly be an impact. So anything that we can do to help our, our parents and our schools to continue, I think we're, we definitely want to look at those and see what we can do. For the CalPERS, when I talked about a bigger discussion, I wanted to have the bigger discussion in the two-year portion of the, of the presentation, even though the impacts are not expected until later because I thought it was important. One of the things, our council adopted a pension stabilization trust in 2017 and we have not yet funded it at all. I've been working on looking at some different, you know, strategies to do this, but planned on proposing had this whole COVID thing not happened. And as a first step, maybe just taking our budget savings and the labor purse items and putting that into the, to the trust just to help us to start building up some of that. There are a lot of ways we can do it, you know, in times that are really good and you've got some surplus, you can increase your, the amount that you're budgeting for PERS. Look at what it might be, what our rates might be. For example, on that PERS chart in 26, 27, if that's our peak, then we look at what we can implement to start actually moving towards paying those costs now. Even though some of them will go to CalPERS, some would go into, to the trust. And then once you get to a point between, you know, somewhere mid between now and, and our rates that we're expecting in 26, 27, then we'd start drawing from that reserve so we could stabilize the impact to the general fund. There are a lot of ways to do that. And so I'm looking forward to future discussions, certainly on that level. But I, I, today I just went digging really deeper into what this might look like in a couple of years. And then as far as, yeah, general facilities fund, that's another thing. I didn't talk at all about the fact that we've got, well, we've got four million, four or five million planned to go into that fund with a couple million dollars in uses. And the city council could say, well, we're not going, we don't want to put the other three million in. So there are all kinds of things that we're looking at, but of course, you, the city council will, will weigh in and provide direction for all of those. We're just kind of gathering what all the ideas are, what those might mean for impacts, how that might save us money. And then we want to present them to you in a fashion that will help you make some informed decisions.
Roberta, could I, could I interrupt that? Because I the hours late and I, I know that you, that your, your brain is exploding with information in this topic. So anything we say will, will, you know, it's like pressing a button and now you're ready to to go. I, I want to make sure we get through all the council quests, the sort of the direct questions. I know you, you're commenting now on sort of the various notes, but if we could get to the direct questions. And knowing that we will continue the, continue the work, I think that might, it might be, make sure that we get everybody's notions on the, on the record, if you don't mind.
Sure. I think there was just one more that I wanted to make sure, the hiring freeze, we, all the essential positions certainly would move forward. So, so that we're not looking at cutting or not, or not filling our, our essential or public safety position. So anyway, I think that was the last question.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you. And then, and Mr. Mayor, this is, I guess it's more common, I need to look for direct questions. Like, there might be a couple embedded in here, but.
Yeah. Questions and comments, sorry.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure. So first of all, Roberta, I hope that's Gatorade or something in your, your lips there, but it's terrific job on all, on all this. I know I've been bugging Aaron and probably you, just trying to figure out where, where we were. It was anxious times, especially as we hear and read other cities already getting kind of their financial preview or a status of their financial situation. So, you know, we've kind of known the steps we've taken over the last decade and longer to kind of set up, but we, you know, we hope would be some, as good a news as we can ask at this first snapshot of where we are and, and, and it was, it is, it's a good first snapshot. I don't want to mistake at all or overemphasize that it's good because it's, we still have some challenges in that. But compared to, you know, what we're reading about in Santa Monica, where over 300 people are being, I think, 70 something are being proposed to be furloughed. I read where yacht bill was told, depends totally on TOT and tourism in their neighborhood. That's 75% of their revenue is out the door because of that. I think you work down in that area, so you probably know that well. We are not in that situation and we, we, you know, it's, it's timely that Aaron and you strategically put that other forecast in front of this one in terms of the economy. And when you talked about a diverse portfolio that we have in our investment strategy, as our investment strategy, we have that here too because of our balance of property tax and sales tax. And especially in our sales tax, how it's been, how it's kind of been, been not so heavy in retail as maybe in other cities. Has really given us sort of a leg up in, in, in sort of so far to have, you know, still, you know, I think it's so at seven, seven percent, eight percent of the decline in revenue. Still significant and it's nothing to sneeze at. I'm not, not at all celebrating, but it could have been, and it still could be much worse, but at least I know we have some firm financial footing, but overall it's extremely terrific job in breaking it down, very detailed. Aaron texted me last night apologizing for the, for the, I told him I was reading, reading, reading. And I said, no, actually I was up late going through it all and I really don't have many questions. It's just, it's because you answered them all. And that's testament to your thoroughness and detailed approach to it. This has some general questions about directionally where we're going. And, and kind of talking about, so what, what risks are ahead? And I think we got a little preview of that from the economic overview that we got prior to this. And it's a really, which is why I'm cautionary about this because and, and what I'm taking in as well is it's, it's, it's the 2009 and recession or collapse in reverse a little bit where back then you had a collapse of the capital markets and the collapse of the banks, which led to foreclosures and then led to job loss. This is starting off with this massive job loss. And now we're going to see what comes after that. To the mayor's point, there's a lot we don't know about what, what those next steps are. Because there's a lot we don't know about kind of what the operating or the opening of our economy is going to look like or be like, as long as we have to live with this virus. And so it is a, there's a lot of a nuh-uh. And but if we're going to start anywhere, I, I take our position in terms of the way we are the way we're positioned with our, with our budget steps we've taken. I, I certainly appreciated the 10-year model and looking at it with much caution. It is, it tells the tale that we, we've got to do something. Because the ramifications this year and next year alone are worth doing, but it also the ramifications for years, three through five and six are going to be really, really important, especially if, if as we expect. And the big hits coming at us about that time is when, when 2011 and 12 is when the state hit us with the, you know, redevelopment is there, they, they got to fix that $54 billion hole. And that's an area I circled in terms of, as the mayor pointed out, is you had some next steps and you, and you, those are all the right steps. But how do we anticipate, you know, I know we are so tied in to the state government and through the work of everyone that, that works around the Capitol from, from our council to our city staff and our lobbyists that work on our behalf. We're tied into what's happening there, but we're really going to keep our ear in the ground on this one because I just don't know where, where they're going to, where they're going to go next to help fill that and where it may come from us. And that's what scares me frankly. I know council member, council member Guerrero brought up the, the federal budget and kind of what they're planning to do next. And while, while I've seen the HEROES Act and looking at the last couple of days, you have the other side of the aisle they have to go through. And they're talking about putting this for another couple of months. And it takes three to tango in Washington and then some. So, so we, there's things that we can't control. But they're going to very much impact us. So depending on those things is, is something we shouldn't be quite thinking about or doing. It's just not, it'd be nice to get funding trickle down from the feds. We're going to need it at every level. But I think we all know the state of the federal government and its priorities have been to date, haven't been aligned with us completely. And the state, while applauding the way the state has handled the COVID, how we handle the medical, public health issues to date. They still have a $54 billion hole to fill and they're not done yet. And so I'm, I'm just very cautious going into this just based on our, the scar tissue we built up over the years and knowing what's coming. I, I really want to kind of call out sort of because, because when we were talking about your assumptions going into it, and I think you talked about how the, the property tax sales or, or the sales and property taxes would, would be a big driver of the decrease today. And I think you kind of just put them out to some degree out to 2020, 2020, that had kind of been, reined stagnant. And, and I think that's where I'm starting to get worried a little bit. We know the federal government through the CARES Act and PPP and all the individual payments, they're propping up a lot of payments right now. Through individual mortgage companies holding up deferrals of loans and mortgages. So people aren't defaulting on, on loans, on their mortgages yet. They're not defaulting on commercial mortgages, but we know those are probably, we're about 60 to 120 days out, we'll start seeing some real issues there as they happen. So, so I'm not at all going to articulate any priorities about what's important to us. I, I love the way we've structured our government and the things we're involved with and the things we've been able to support for the past five years. It took a lot of work for us and hard decisions and discipline to get to a state of, of our budget to, A, to solidify, to make sure we've learned the lessons of the past and can, can have a moment where we feel okay, cautious, but okay about where we are. But also to support our priorities we've had. So, so everything from the, the transit via program we built to that is, as our, my colleagues brought up, our homeless initiatives to daycare initiatives. All those things we have gotten more involved with and we found ways to sustain them. Thanks to our taxpayers who believed in us and we've shown that they can be sustainable. But they're going to be tested now. And I think that's really something that I caution everyone with and I'm, I'm, I'm just, it's extremely important that, those things are extremely important to us. But I think having a city, their people know that their services are there, that their government is functioning, making wise, prudent decisions is even more important. They got to trust us again. We don't know where we're going to be in, in a, in a year or two. I don't think anybody is going to to do that. But, and, and, and I appreciate you coming back to us and saying some of these prioritization issues that we may have to come back and take the mitigation. That you're going to come back and get our support. And I, and I, and I thank you because we're going to have to make those tough decisions at that time. But what you do have our support on now is really what you just said, which is this is what we've managed to do really well for the last 10 years. And, and so you're, this is about as thorough of a budget review I've seen. And I think our, our, our executive team on the, on the call here today has done a really great job over the years of, of kind of getting to the budget discipline. And, and you have our total support to kind of deal with, what you said is be creative, think about your budgets, be mindful of our taxpayers' hard-earned dollars that we're, that they're, they're using, but also how they support the city as a whole. So as you said, they can be creative, think about their budgets differently. Every idea is probably a good one at this point to sort of help mitigate the risk that's coming. So anyway, just want to applaud you for this very good budget. And, and, and Aaron, same to you. I know you, you helped set the table on this with your strategies over the last 10 years and I can work in all parts of the city. So thank you for your leadership on this as well. But thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mayor Potem Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll add my note, note of thanks. I, I feel like this comprehensive overview is incredibly helpful. I, I feel like it's both sobering and hopeful somehow together at the same time. And I'm, I won't echo, I won't, I won't repeat what a number of my colleagues have brought up, a number of the issues also, also I had, I shared. And I, I think for me, the, the long-term model, I think it's really helpful, helpful for us to be looking forward and how the the things that we tackle today can affect us in the future and that's important. But then there's also the concern that I have is, is the variability that happens over time. When you have a model that has a number of assumptions, some of it, even small, small changes can have dramatic effects. So I think we just have to remain mindful about that. With regard to the potential mitigation measures, I think it's really important to be thinking about what can be done in the short term as, as well as some things that you'll come back to us for the long term. I am not usually a big, a big supporter of across-the-board cuts at a certain level. I, I had to deal with those at the University of California while I think but in this case, to me, I feel pretty confident because a couple of my colleagues asked about that and it sounds like this is being done in a thoughtful way and asking for input from, from the departments and really looking at impact. So it may have to be done, but it's typically not like the first, the first option that I, I go for just because I know how careful we are in our budget preparation and I know how the directors work so hard on thinking through those. So even while we may have to do that, I think sometimes just an across-the-board may not be the approach that gets us the results we want as a city. So just, just some caution there. And then the vacancy assumption, having that, that, that is something that you stated that we probably always will have and is pretty easy to. to add in. And again, in my background with universities, it's something we always budgeted with. We always had something called a float. And we always assumed that we had something extra that was related to vacancies and openings. The only thing is then you have to really carefully monitor that if you're actually can you can never never if you start to assume that in your budget, as you know, I'm not telling you anything you don't know. Then you always have to manage that, that you if you assumed that in your model. So I just think all these things that you've done, you put an amazing amount of thinking into it. I my colleagues are very thoughtful with this. So I know I know we when we're moving forward, we can we can come up with some good options for ourselves. And it's been stated, we are in a pretty pretty good position given given the state of things. But this isn't going to be easy. And I know I know we're going to be working, not shoulder to shoulder because we're on Zoom, but we're going to be working as 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 well as we can given the circumstances and and I look forward to for your future reports. So thank you again for the completeness and the thoroughness and the thoughtfulness.
Thanks, Mayor Protem Sandin. Just a couple a couple of comments. I mean, this is this is our fiscal the fiscal management city of West Sacramento, I think, is has been widely heralded for maintaining stability while also making significant investments in in sort of breakthrough services and innovations like downtown streets or the home run or other or the preschool program that we've done while also maintaining one of the most solid financial bases in in the region. And it's 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 not even two years ago that folks were were calling for a state audit because they thought we were putting too much money into reserves. And that we should just spend it all then. And I think this is an example of why we why we have those that that strategy and why it is critical to take in to to remember that we're managing a hundred million dollar plus enterprise that faces all sorts of threats and challenges and has to be run with some sense of business principles. And so and it has been, and we have a solid team that's that's extraordinarily capable on that side. And we have you know, a couple of members of the council have managed to, you know, at the executive level, you know, complex, large organizations. So we're we're we are culturally, organizationally and financially, we are in the best shape possible to deal with is what is still, as Councilmember Ledesma said, and everyone else has echoed a very serious situation, right? If if it weren't for all the other cities laying off two or three hundred people and or El Cerrito for lowering everyone in the city, you know, those situations, if it weren't for those and we were facing a seven percent reduction in revenues, it would be a crisis. It's just I think there's a sense of you know, we have to be humble about the crisis that we're facing, given given how bad it is in so many other places financially and then what the all the future uncertainty that we might be facing. And although I, you know, we've been working with Speaker Pelosi on the Heroes Act, which is going to come up for the House vote on Friday, but as Mr. Ledesma emphasized, the Senate has made it pretty clear that they're not coming back to hear it at all. And the White House has also said that they're not they're not forward. And so we have to keep working on those issues while also not budgeting on the on the basis of them. Because the last relief package also was supposed to have funds in it for us. And so was the one prior to that. So we have to be both hopeful and fight for those resources. And all the other resources that we might be able to get while also budgeting as though they're not coming. And that's been that's that's been sort of the the secret sauce here is to is to be both you know, ambitious and hopeful and 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 try to meet the needs in our community while simultaneously recognizing the the fiscal realities that we're that we're facing. We enter property taxes are mixed. They're mixed bag in the long run. And in the in the in this sort of a crisis, they are a much better buffer than other sources of revenue. If they do take a hit, though, at some point, they're the last ones to recover, thanks to Proposition thirteen and the and the changes in assessed value valuation. And what we have seen in both here and elsewhere is that that we can be sometimes not the first to exit the fiscal challenges. And we'll see we'll see other cities saying, hey, we're out of it now and we're going to raise our police and firefighter salaries by twenty five percent. And we can't because of of property taxes take longer to rebound than are the sources of revenues in those kinds of circumstances. And so taking the long view here is very important. So what is a what is a it's a counter cyclical tax revenue source in some ways for us? That's great. Over the long run, though, it mostly just trues up. And we have to be cognizant of that and not think that we've been we've been chosen by by some divine power to to be to be isolated from the impacts of 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 this of this crisis. The one thing I just want to say, just sort of culturally in our organization is I'm 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 gonna for me, I'm going to sit very strongly and and hope that our staff does the same and my colleagues that that the that the entire city organization is essential. That the essential not essential term was a term used by the by, you know, the public health folks in order for a very specific purpose. But when we see the think the dramatically increased usage of our parks and 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 the parks workers are there or aren't there to make sure that there aren't hazards in the grass? You know, needles or what have you. No parent or residents can say that's not an essential worker. When you turn on the water and it comes out and it's not it's not toxic, you're not going to think the water plant worker is not essential. When your when your firefighter shows up because she has childcare and she and her and her daughter is at learning ladder, you're not going to say that the preschool and the childcare center are not essential. When the when the police officer is there because they know that they have the 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 health benefits and their insurance and that their purse pigments are going to come on time, you're not going to say that human resources is not essential. We are all in this together as a city. And our entire team is is working like crazy. They're doing their best. They feel the pain of both of the people that we represent and that they serve. But many of them are the people that we represent and we serve also and their families too. And it is our our entire team deserves our our support. And and I know you know, from our own from our police officers and firefighters, they feel the same way about their colleagues in 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 all the departments of the city that they work with and that support them as well. So I just I we we have gone through periods in our history where where our where our city's been, our city government's been divided in that way. And it's never helped. And this is a time when we all have to come together, both as a community and as a city government and these budget this budget situation makes that even makes that even clearer. So I thanks, Roberta and Aaron and the whole team and to the council for your your continued leadership in this space. And no, we're all I don't want to say we're all looking forward to this coming back. But we know it must. And and I guess the other thing I would say, and which I didn't earlier around that these three areas is I emphasize the state impacts in terms of that third threat. But it's also in Mr. Ledesma's race this before, it isn't just the state, it's the other governmental entities too. So if if Yolo Bus, which relies heavily on the the TDA monies, our our sales tax revenues essentially, right? So to the extent that other local entities or regional entities that we participate in or the our residents and on that their budgets also are intertwined with ours. So we're going to face some of their challenges to the sewer district is is another example that we just need to be attentive to to that the threats to them because they're an extended part of us as well. But the other comment is that we're not just trying to rebound financially from the cuts. We also are facing a different set of issues. And so although I think I want to encourage our team to to think about or to remember that, you know, as we're as as Project Room Key ends and we're trying to figure out now what happens with folks that have been housed during this crisis in the motels pursuant to that program. And there is a profound need and an expectation in our community that we don't just reset back to February twenty twenty levels of of unsheltered homelessness, for example, that we we are called upon as a city to at least think about, what do we do about those issues? So we will have programmatic needs and demands. We all feel and hear, you know, dozens or hundreds of them. And although we can't do hardly any of them, hardly any isn't zero. We're going to have to, we will be challenged as a city to also rethink not just our our financial resiliency, but also our programmatic resiliency too. So I don't I don't have a proposal. I definitely I I you know me well enough to know I I definitely don't feel like I want to invite a set of proposals around. What else should we be doing? But I think it's reasonable to assume that we that there will be there will be needs that we cannot shy away from as we as we come out of or move to the next stage of these crises and that our that our fiscal, you know, that will pose some additional fiscal challenges that we are going to have to address. And it won't be enough for us to simply say we can't do that because it doesn't fit with our with our with our with our pre crisis budget model. So Mr. Ledesma, where you
Well, two things. I was a comment on that point because so much there's still so much we don't know. And I know, Roberta, thank you for for showing us the kind of COVID related expenses that we're you're and you're pushing to get reimbursed to us. So so thank you. And I suspect if this goes on one way or the other over the next months and months. And other to that point that other expenses we're not anticipating that we may need. I think just again, I'm back to if it helps the community move into another phase faster or get to a better place from a public safety perspective. You know, and it's better off. And I don't know if that's whether our our purchase of testing or contact tracing infrastructure or at least matching grant, whatever. We I mean, I'm not asking for that priority, but we got to be open to that. We don't know what the next kind of programmatic expense is going to be. And that's been on my mind, too. And we always count on the county to do those things. And the state to kind of come in or the feds to help backstop it. But but again, I think part of us made us very kind of the secret sauce, as the mayor calls it, but I just kind of makes who is who we are is we've kind of found out those opportunities and found ways to take advantage of them or use the opportunity to get ahead. And I think I just want to make sure that the budget can as we could budget that we we have room for that opportunity instead of further that notion. So so that's one item. And then if there's another comment, I was going to make the motion, but I'll let the mayor see if he has anything else.
Okay, Councilmember Guerrero, comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I did want to also add along the lines of what Councilmember Ledesma said. As I see what the Senate plan is for an economic recovery, I'm looking at how they're trying to preserve what is our biggest revenue sources is our, you know, property tax. And so they're trying to prevent foreclosures and looking at supplementing rental assistance as a way to help landlords to protect them from foreclosures. So along along the same lines, I'm noticing that at the federal level, the package includes a lot of rental assistance and foreclosure prevention or or mortgage relief. So that that helps, I think, in the long term from what I heard to be what could be a negative impact further in the out years as the challenge is an economic recovery. And for folks who are unemployed right now, to be able to get back and find jobs and be able to make ends meet, whether it be their mortgage or their rent. So to look at what we can include in using either Mezran or whatever whatever funding, some some similar type of access to those economic recovery resources as a way to mitigate, you know, our our hit to our budget. So to, you know, add on some additional support for our constituents so that, you know, we can help them buffer the negative impact to their, you know, to what they're experiencing as a result of unemployment.
Right, Mr. Ledesma.
I think we have an action to take, which is to adopt or make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty fifty two as recommended.
In a second.
All right. So a move by Mr. Ledesma and second by Ms. Guerrero. There are any further question or debates? All right, then, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco. I'm sorry. Councilmember Orozco.
We seem to have lost her for the moment. She may she may be returning.
Okay, and Mayor Protem Sandin.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco. Mayor Cabaldin.
Aye. All right, so that motion carries. So we'll proceed then to item five, which is consideration Resolution twenty dash thirty five, approving an amendment to the Capital Improvement Program, approval of plans and specifications for the West Capitol Avenue Safety Enhancement and Road Rehabilitation Project, and awarding a construction contract to Granite Rock Company.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and council members. It's good to see you all. I hope everyone is is well healthwise. I am very thankful to be, you know, working for a city that is you know, even considering capital project of this magnitude in light of the item that came before this. Okay, so with my presentation, since it's been a while since we adjust this project, I'm going to go over briefly the scope, the timing of project, and then we'll get into the budget. You know, for which tonight we're asking council to consider awarding construction contract. The project scope limits, that is essentially includes most of West Capitol Avenue, starting on the very west end at Enterprise Boulevard, and then coming eastward past Harvard Boulevard all the way to Jefferson Boulevard. And that it also includes a segment of Jefferson Boulevard to the south to just before the intersection of Park Boulevard. Now, the the scope of the project includes a road rehabilitation component, the safety enhancements, and some underground utility work. The road rehab is fairly typical. We started with a payment rehab project and that typically triggers ADA concrete upgrades at at all the intersections that involve replacing all the curb ramps. And then typically what we do at the end of a road rehab project is we will re stripe and redeline eight the surface for vehicular travel. Now, with this project, we have a number of safety items that were identified. You know, West Capitol Avenue in itself is is the city's main street. It it varies from the very west end from Glaia on to Enterprise is mostly light industrial and industrial. And then from Glaia to West Acre is predominantly residential. And then further to the east from West Acre to Jefferson is part of our central business district. So we have to treat the rest of re striping or redelineation of the roadway afterward done rehabbing in in very in a very different manner. That being said, the safety enhancements include a hundred and twenty streetlights. Most of those lights are being added to the west of Harbor Harbor Boulevard. There are many existing mid block crossings which we will enhance with additional signage and and striping. And then, as you may also know, West Capitol Avenue is widely used by commuters on bicycles. So we we are also adding buffered bicycle lanes wherever possible from the Causeway all the way to Jefferson Boulevard. And then some of the signals along that this project are obsolete. So one of the items, one of the bid alternates include some signal upgrades. And then next we have the underground utilities. Now, when we first embarked in this project, we thought it was just a road rehab project to fix the road. As we completed the water master plan, we identified a couple of segments of water mains that need a replacement. One segment is on the west end from approximately the our location of our new corp yard to Enterprise Boulevard or to our PSIP reservoir, water reservoir. And then the other segment is from West Acre to Jefferson. That's a very old line that needs to be replaced. That's failed multiple times already and our coworkers going in staff, you know, cannot keep up with operation maintenance of that segment. Next, I'm going to get into the timing of the project. As you may be aware of, we started this project several years ago in two thousand sixteen with with a grant to rehab the roadway. And then since then, we've been working to actually add additional scope and add additional funding because we received direction from 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 our exec team and from council that we want to see all these improvements to West Capitol Avenue. But I just want to, you know, clarify and set the expectation that the the stretch of the of of West Capitol and Jefferson that we're working on encompasses about three point three mile. the, the stretch of the, uh, of, of, of West Capitol and Jefferson that we're working on encompasses about 3.3 miles. So with the scale of a project that we have, I just want to set the expectation that this is not going to be a streetscape-like project, you know, similar to what you see in front of City Hall. We're essentially fixing the roadway, and we are, uh, trying to make it safer for pedestrians and cyclists. And in the process, we want to replace underground utilities so that we don't end up destroying the road surface after the fact. Now, included in the underground utilities is some dry utilities that, um, you know, includes conduit banks uh, that run from Jefferson Boulevard all the way, uh, west to the new corporation yard. But one of the bid alternatives is to install fiber optic cable that would also better facilitate our, um, uh, you know, telecom connections to City Hall. Now, as far as back to the timing again, uh, staff has been diligently working on the project. We were finally able to clear environmental, um, in, in April of 2019. And, and we finally got state approval to bid and advertise the project late 2019. Now, the project was advertised in February, and we opened bid, um, on March 18th. And with that, we have 60 days to award the contract. Uh, looking ahead, you know, if council does award this contract, uh, we anticipate construction will span two seasons. Most likely, the contractor will start with the underground work, uh, the waterland work, and, and trenching for conduits. And then most likely, um, the resurfacing of repaving work, you will not see until spring of 2021. So that should give you a look ahead as to the project timing and construction. Now onward to the budget. The proj- project cost is at approximately 17.2 million that we identified for the total project. Uh, but we only have funding for $16.5 million. So what staff is proposing in light of, uh, you know, the current historic circumstances is that we're going to have to tightly manage this project in construction. In fact, we will most likely have to value engineer and, and, um, you know, hopefully not to get into too many squabbles with the contractor in, in running this project, uh, you know, very, very tightly during construction. Uh, we believe that we can do that. We still need to knock off about $640,000 during construction just to fit within the project. You know, one of the things I wanted to note is that, um, this particular, the funding for the project uh, includes six different grants totaling over $10.2 million uh, with seven city matching funds, not counting water enterprise funds. So, so to, to bring a project like this to, to fruition after four years, um, you know, takes a lot of time and effort. Uh, I want to thank, uh, you know, our senior engineer, Candido Ramirez. He, he did a very nice job getting us to this point. You know, I, I know it's, it's, it's never ideal to, to start a project without uh, sufficient funding in, in contingency, but I, I think with the staff we have, uh, we can manage that. So with that, that concludes my, uh, you know, my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. I know Candido is also on the line, along with Gary Prudell. And, um, uh, you know, after the questions, I ask that council consider the, um, recommended action.
All right, thank you, Ben. Uh, this is a, it is a major project and, and one of the most important corridors in the city. And as you indicated, this is, this, this project has a lot of parents to it, from all the different things, objectives that we've been trying to do, and while also not ripping up the road every time we get a new grant to do water or sewer, fiber, whatever. So this is, this is an important, and as important as it is, equally complicated project, and we're setting a great job in order to make that happen. I do have a question, just on the, on the, the, the cost side. So that there is a contingency for the water portion of the project, but not for the road portion of the project? Is that, is that what I'm reading correctly?
That is correct. Typically, with underground projects, uh, especially water trenching, we never know what we're going to encounter. So it's, it's very risky to go without any contingency, especially working on a road as, as old as West Capitol Avenue. So we are asking for $400,000 in contingency from the water fund for that.
All right, so the portion, the portion for which you aren't requesting a contingency, which is definitely a different, I mean, definitely, we don't never, we, we never do that. But, uh, that's for stuff that's all above ground that you know how to, that, you know, things could still happen. You're not, you're not guarantee, I know you're not making any guarantees tonight that we won't, that, that the things that normally trigger a contingency won't happen here. But you can be a bit more confident about it than the under, under the ground work.
Right. One of the things we're looking at is, um, the project's specifications call for rubberized asphalt hot mix. That's a little more expensive, but it's quieter and more durable. Uh, but contrary to what most people believe, um, we've, we've actually considered that, we thought about possibly rebidding project. Perhaps we may get a better price. That may, may not be the case. The price of asphalt, asphalt is a byproduct of, of diesel or, you know, fuel. And with less people driving, uh, the price of asphalt may, may not be any lower. In fact, I think CalChans is in a dispute with many road contractors right now because they lower their, you know, asphalt adjustment rates. But that's one area where we think we can save $250,000. Uh, we were going to get a match grant from, from CalRecycle to augment that. And certainly, we're going to go after that grant next year. So if, if we're successful in obtaining that grant, uh, we could, you know, possibly consider that in, in the project. Other items, um, there are components of, uh, signal infrastructure at different intersections that we would like to bring up to current standards. Uh, but we may have to postpone those improvements and just have our staff deal with maintaining them, maintaining them. And if there's a possibility, some of these items that could be done by our in-house staff, uh, we may look at deleting those and striking those from the contract as, as a cost savings measure.
Okay. You're talking about the signals, uh, the, um, uh, maybe because I've been biking as the primary form of getting around, uh, during the, during the emergency. And note, note, just on, on, on several, at several intersections where, that are relatively new, that, that bikes don't trigger the signal. So you either have to make your way to the walk sign or wait for a car to come, which during, right now, cars don't come that often. Is, is, will, in, will this project, uh, will all of those signals be triggerable, triggerable by a bicycle?
Yes, yes. We, in fact, we are switching to, um, video detection. At these intersections, uh, the items that we would not replace, so it would be, for example, we may have, uh, signal lamps that are eight inches, the size eight inch, and we, we need it to be a 10 inch. We may forego those improvements. But as far as, um, you know, the current detection at these intersections may be inductive loops. But we're going to go with video detection, which would be more bicycle-friendly. You know, something like that, we would not delete from the contract.
Okay. Then my only other question was about the north side of West Capitol Avenue, from Houston to the, to the, to the east, and particularly in the vicinity of the Meadowdale neighborhood, which is a neighborhood that for many residents of the city, it's hidden, they've never seen or heard of. Um, but it's, you know, it's one of our older neighborhoods, little pocket, um, isolated from virtually everywhere else in the city. Uh, can you, can you talk a little bit, this was alternative, a bid alternative C, or B, sorry, right?
That would be C, absolutely.
So maybe, could you talk a little bit about that and what, what we were intending to achieve and, and what we're giving up by now?
Sure, absolutely. Um, we are aware that, that, you know, there are bicycle, uh, there are sidewalk gaps, or furnished improvement gaps, uh, along, along West Capitol Avenue. And we identified, uh, especially to the, to the west of Harbor Boulevard. You know, we, we have, uh, identified several sidewalk gaps. I am aware that the Meadowdale neighborhood is residential. It is located on the south side of West Capitol Avenue. We are in fact extending and, and, and bridging that sidewalk gap on, on the, oh, the south side of West Capitol Avenue. This 1.5 million is for the north side.
Okay.
And ideally, we would like to construct that and, and widen the bike lane to go all the way under the freeway. But, uh, in light of that, you know, this, uh, this segment of furnished improvements adjacent to light industrial areas, we do not believe is worth the $1.5 million.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, other questions or comments from members of the council? Mayor Protem Sandin?
Yes, thank you. Um, thanks for coming back to us after the, um, presentation we had, I think, a couple of meetings ago, to go over this in more detail. I really appreciate it. I, and I'm assuming, I, I want to ask a question. I, I'm assuming I know the answer, but I just want to make sure, um, that I understand. The contractor is, it understands that the, there is no contingency and the, the fiscal, um, the way in which they're going, they'll be working with you closely in terms of, um, design and oversight.
Yes, it's basically the not-to-exceed amount on our contract.
Okay.
That's what we're going to be working with.
So I know it's unusual because mo, almost every single other contract, especially the scale and magnitude, has 15%, I think. Um, is that, is that our typical amount?
Typically, we ask for 10%.
10, okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make crystal clear that they, that, that they were aware in going into this and that we're, we're all going into the size wide open. This is a really important project for us. And with all of the, the different pieces of funding, I, I have to figure out, and it sounds, and we have, um, figured out a path forward. But I know how complex this is, and thank you to you and all the teams working on this because I know, uh, very intricate and really important. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Guerrero?
Uh, Ben, thank you, um, for the presentation. Um, this is very helpful, again, in bringing it back. I appreciate, um, that this, this, you know, thoughtfulness that you put into on all the different aspects of safety, um, both the bike and pedestrian. Given the, the number of years we've not had it and, and the demand for it. And now we're seeing it come to fruition through this project, which I'm very supportive of. Um, and just, you know, looking at what we continue to do to, um, draw down additional funding, you know, whether it be through a grant or through other opportunities and, um, reducing the cost. Appreciate your creativity in exploring those, um, and researching those opportunities for us. You know, it is something I appreciate with all our staff who have, um, done tremendous work and, you know, um, you know, that's why we're, we're, we're at, where we're at financially is because you've done incredible job in, um, saving the city a lot of money. And then also achieving such, um, you know, uh, change in a central area of West Sacramento, um, well utilized. So looking forward to seeing this project, um, moving forward. Um, and, uh, thank you for just making it happen.
All right, any further question or, or discussion?
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Right, it's been moved, uh, by Councilmember Guerrero and seconded by Mayor Protem Sandin. Seeing no further discussion, all the, uh, Madam Clerk, please call the rolls.
Yes, Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sandin.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
And Marika Baldwin.
Aye. Carries, that brings us to item six. Thank you, Ben. Uh, that brings us to item six, which is consideration of reaffirming the proclamation declaring a local emergency in response to the global COVID-19 outbreak. Richard Oze?
Good evening, uh, Mayor and council members. I'll, uh, keep this very brief as we're past 10 o'clock now. And the purpose of this item is to recommend that the council reaffirm its declaration uh, of a local emergency in relation to the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak. Uh, as you know, uh, the city manager declared this emergency on March 16th, and the council then ratified it, uh, on March 18th. Uh, it did include a declaration that after 60 days, it, it would expire without reaffirmation. Uh, we're approaching that date, uh, May 17th, it would expire. Uh, we believe it's appropriate, given that state and county, uh, orders remain in place to reaffirm this declaration. Uh, and as we continue to deal with, uh, the public health emergency and react to the phase reopening, uh, relaxing of certain orders at the state and county levels, it'll be critical that the city continues to, uh, operate under this, uh, declaration of local emergency. Uh, in closing, I will note that the governor's, uh, state of emergency proclamation included a waiver of the 60-day requirement for cities to reaffirm a state of a local emergency. So technically, uh, not required to do this. However, we felt, uh, it was appropriate, uh, given the general state of uncertainty that faces, um, the community dealing with this, uh, crisis. Uh, to give a definitive date, in this case, it would be July 12th, at which this order would either expire or be reconsidered by the council. Uh, of course, you do have the authority to rescind the declaration, uh, at any point and end this local emergency. You don't have to wait the full 60 days. Uh, with that, I am happy to take any questions I can answer.
All right, other questions, Richard Oze? Mr. Ledesma?
Unless anybody had any questions. I'd say, yeah, warranted, more than warranted. Thank you, um, for Aaron, for the good work and, uh, fully supportive of this, most, of this, uh, recommendation and move the recommended action.
I'll second.
All right, so it's been moved by Mr. Ledesma and seconded by, uh, the Roscoe. I, I, I would just like to add that this also, uh, the, the, the declaration is important for our, reimbursement efforts with the federal and state governments for, for the work that we are undertaking. Um, it is unrelated to the, the shelter order in the sense that this is not the basis for the shelter order. So that, um, the, the shelter in place order is a county order issued by the public health officer. This is, um, a city or state of emergency that does not, um, implement in any way the, the, the shelter policy itself. It is the, there is the state law on the 60 days. Um, the municipal code also contains the same provision. And the governor doesn't have the authority to waive our municipal code. But I think more fundamentally, um, it is, you know, we are, we are through this, through these emergency, um, proclamations, granting extraordinary power to the, to the, to the city manager in his capacity as director of local emergency services. And, uh, it is, in, in doing so, we are, um, transferring authority from the, from the, uh, democratically elected part of the government to the administrative portion. And we should, we should be doing that and help holding ourselves accountable. And the public should have an expectation that we will affirmatively take action to do. So that's why I'm, I'm supportive of continuing to do this on the timeframe, even if, um, the, the, the state position is that, you could have an indefinite emergency at the local level. So thanks for the motion. Thanks for the report. Uh, Councilmember Guerrero?
Oh, no, no comment, sorry.
All right, then, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the end?
Yes, Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sandin.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Marika Baldwin.
Aye.
Thank you.
The motion carries. That brings us to item seven, which is our weekly update and actions on the city's COVID-19 response. Mr. Laurel?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Um, I'm going to make a very brief, uh, report tonight. Not, not just because of the late hour, but because, uh, the updates are, um, already there in the report, and, uh, we can get to questions pretty quick. I did want to start just by, um, giving some thanks to the staff that worked on the items tonight. I think it's a reflection of the, the commitment I've been talking about. Uh, not just the staff working through the emergency side of this, but also keeping, uh, regular business and regular projects going, uh, both with Roberta's work on the budget, um, and, and all the staff that contributed to that. I want to thank, uh, Roberta especially, but also, uh, Becky and her department and the, the human resources team, uh, for a lot of contributions on that. Uh, we're just at the beginning of it. It's a long road ahead of us, but, uh, we have a great team, uh, to, uh, tackle that, uh, the budget issues ahead. So, on the West Capitol project, that's a project that's been, um, ongoing, as, as was said, for a long time. Um, and so, uh, want to thank you for, um, all the acknowledgement, uh, for the, the staff's work on that. Uh, so in terms of the update tonight, uh, just really briefly, um, the, the most notable thing about the, the case, uh, the COVID cases in, in the county and, and West Sac, is we're, we're still continuing to go in the right way in terms of the case trend. Uh, I believe last week, yes, last week was the first week since this began where there were actually no new reported cases in West Sacramento. Um, I don't want to, um, get, you know, overly optimistic about that because we had, we have had, uh, reported cases during this week. Um, so it's not as if, um, that number is an indication of, uh, expectations of zero cases going forward. Uh, similarly, the county, uh, countywide, there are 179 cases as of today. I think what's more notable, though, uh, the hospitalization rate jumped quite a bit, um, just today. It went from, uh, 35, which you see in the report, uh, which were the numbers from yesterday. Uh, now they're at 42 hospitalizations countywide. So, uh, definitely not out of the woods yet. There's a lot of work ongoing statewide about what it takes to, um, do these, uh, uh, affirmations of readiness for reopening. And, and as you, as you know, probably by now, uh, one of the main ones is- now, uh, one of the main ones is being able to show that you don't have community spread and you don't have COVID-related deaths. So on that basis, we're not, we're not there yet. Um, very few counties are, but, uh, but we're continuing to watch that. We continue to work with the county and, and their staff, um, on all the work related to, uh, those preparations. But, um, definitely the data is trending the right way, but, um, just want to emphasize that, uh, all the, all the measures that we're taking to prevent the spread and flatten the curve and hopefully end up reducing the curve, um, are showing to be still necessary. Uh, so, uh, other than that, I just want to point out that the trends on the other data, uh, in terms of city services has been fairly steady. Um, still, uh, no major change in terms of calls for service and that sort of thing. The enforcement cases are down a little bit, uh, which is a good sign. Hopefully shows, uh, some of the issues we were experiencing before with, uh, retail mask compliance are starting to, um, uh, you know, get less, uh, prevalent. So other than that, I'll, I'll turn it over to the council. The highlights, um, literally are, are the new items. Um, and I know there's probably some updates the council wants to chime in on also based on some of those. So I'll go ahead and turn it back to you, uh, for now.
All right. Thank, thanks, Mr. Laurel. Uh, before we get started, the, uh, the, the board supervisors yesterday took up, uh, the county's, um, uh, updated plan, um, uh, and I, the city manager has transmitted that to, to each of us as well. Um, that, I believe that, that, I, maybe it's the updated version. When the board took it up, um, it was optimistic that we were close to being able to move to the next stage, um, stage two, um, uh, based on where those num, where the numbers were trending. Uh, and then, um, shortly there are, a couple of hours later, the, uh, county public health, um, reported, um, two additional deaths in Yolo County, um, which means that there, that we do not meet the, the, the state's definition. Um, and, uh, the, the, the current state rule is, is death, one death over 14 days. Um, and even if that changes two deaths in, in, you know, the last, yesterday, um, is going to mean that it's, 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 it's a while before the, before change happens. The other point, I just want to reemphasize that this is, this is not, it's not fantasy baseball or some game where, where it's like, well, but we have, there's, the hospitalization was on astroturf under light and wind assisted. That's not, this is not about, it, the metrics were laid out, uh, by the governor and by the county and by others, um, as decision guides for when we, when we would be to overcome with emotion and expectation to, to make, uh, the right decisions in terms of public safety. Um, uh, but they're real markers of, of, of the threat of contagion and, and spread of, of the virus. And so even, even the, the, the metrics that the county's been doing well on, um, if you, if we were a county unto ourselves, we would not pass. Um, and, and we don't, we don't meet the health indicators. We've had a significant number of increases in hospitalizations. Um, and our, our case numbers are, are, are good, um, but they're not, but, and we are responsible for more than half of the hospitalizations in all of Yolo County. The deaths yesterday in Yolo County were not at skilled nursing facilities, um, as the large number were before. Um, and it's, it's, it ought to be a reminder, we're not, this is not going to be a situation most likely where it is just, um, in inexorable, uh, trend towards getting better and better and better and better and better. That it's, this is going to be a roller coaster and we will have moments, um, that, uh, we are trying to avoid and minimize where things don't go our way and things sometimes get worse before they get better, hopefully. Um, but it's also, it is also a reminder that we can't, we're not in a position like Del Norte County or, or what have you, or Butte County to suddenly, uh, move to full, full reopening, not just because of what the governor has said, but because of, uh, the sort of the universal agreement about which key public health indicators need to be satisfied. And in addition, we don't yet have any significant testing going on in West Sacramento. County's report shows that this, the testing capacity that's, that's happening at Sutter Davis Hospital and at Woodland General Hospital, but we don't have a hospital and we have no testing, um, uh, on a formal basis here yet. And the new state level testing that's occurring is also occurring at the Yolo County Fairgrounds in Woodland. So even if the county makes those numbers, um, it's not necessarily an indication in West Sacramento that we've achieved what we need either in the health numbers or in our ability to contain a future outbreak, uh, from getting out of control without the adequate amount of testing and contact tracing. So I, I certainly concur that, that on the whole, uh, what we've been doing is working, but what we, what we've been doing is not a permanent solution. Um, of course, the best way for us to get out of this, all the research shows that, uh, a full massive amount of testing and contact tracing is better than shelter in place at containing the virus. It is the better solution. So we, 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 we know how to get there with, but it's a lot more testing and tracing than, than is currently being planned for, um, that would be needed in order to fully exit, um, all stages of shelter in place. And, uh, we have to continue to develop those mechanisms that press on it. I also shared with the council, the report that we released yesterday from the, uh, National Pandemic Resilience Task Force is the task force I've reported on a couple of times that I'm serving on, um, with Harvard and, and, and General McChrystal and, and others, um, to build out the deployment, the deployment capacity. So I shared that with the council, I think yesterday when, when we released, when we released that, uh, report as well. And it goes into very, very fine-grained detail about, um, how to apply those stand, those, um, taste, testing and tracing standards here at the, at the local level in ways that are, are specifically tailored to places of like West Sacramento. Um, so I think we're, and I, I think I've reported also Mayor Steinberg and I have been working on a contact tracing partnership with Sierra Health Foundation and, um, uh, the local community colleges in Les Rios and, uh, the public health officers in both Yolo and Sacramento to try to connect, um, to the allied health programs. So, so students who are already in community health worker pro, uh, training programs or nursing or other allied health occupational fields, um, could be, could get, um, supplemental training, um, as, as contact tracers and then, um, account that for, uh, their clinical work experience for their programs. Um, and there are a lot of students in, in, uh, the West Sacramento and, and Yolo County area that could benefit from that. So a lot of efforts are underway, but we have to get it done. And it's been a, it's been a key priority and we can't, um, the county will make the determination on the shelter order. Um, but we, we've got to pay attention to the, to the data and to the, and to the status of West Sacramento, um, and the health of ours, and the health and safety of our citizens as well. So appreciate the, the continued work in that, in that space. Are there, uh, questions or comments for the city manager on, on item seven? Councilmember Guerrero?
Hi. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to get a little more information about, um, you know, I did, I did see that that report, um, moving into phase two, uh, was before learning of the additional, um, deaths, the unfortunate deaths and, uh, and the situation that, um, contributed to that. Uh, so in the next steps, I understand, um, you're in discussion with the county and, um, uh, EOC is, is continuing discussions. What, what are the next steps to, um, take a look at phase two? What are, what, what exactly is happening?
Well, I think part of that's a function of, of, uh, what the state is willing to do statewide. It starts there. Um, so the state, uh, order is still in effect. The governor's laid out the guidelines for, uh, what moving, uh, between the stages looks like on a statewide level. Um, so that's still your baseline. Beyond that, uh, they've given the guidance to the counties that if you can, um, attest to all these conditions like we, we just kind of covered there, um, then they will consider allowing counties to move, uh, further into, uh, stage two. The most important metric there though is the test of, uh, no, no, uh, COVID-related deaths within the last two weeks. There are other ones that are, that are, um, also difficult to meet, but that is the one that I think no matter what county you're in, uh, especially the larger counties, um, it's, it's very difficult to, um, to reach that milestone. Um, I know there are conversations at the, at the county level, uh, county public health level, um, that are involving, you know, statewide, um, uh, you know, counties that, that are pointing that, that issue out to the state. Um, I don't know, I, I don't know that there's going to be any change to that, but I know that it is being discussed, um, and on, on a statewide basis. But that, that is really the essential issue in Yolo County right now. Uh, there are also, as the mayor mentioned, the, the concerns about getting to the levels of testing and tracing, um, that would, that there's, it's one thing to qualify, but it's another to do it effectively to the point where we can confidently go forward with things, um, in terms of reopening without worrying about future outbreaks and, and getting right back to, uh, some of the limits because we have outbreaks. So, but the main one is my, my understanding is the main issue is the, uh, no deaths within two weeks. And, and again, that's a statewide issue for, uh, counties.
Other questions or comments from the city manager? All right. Then, then thank you. We don't have any action items under item seven this week. Um, so we will proceed now to council calendar.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Um, just one, uh, update for tonight. The, um, RD 900 meeting that's scheduled for the 20th, um, it shows on the calendar that it's going to be in the chambers, but it'll be, um, a teleconference on Zoom and it'll be at four o'clock instead of 4:30. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions on the calendar? All right. City manager report?
No other reports tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. City attorney report?
Nothing to report tonight.
All right. Staff directions for members of the council. We have no future agenda item requests. Uh, Councilmember Orozco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, I wanted to take the opportunity to adjourn. Uh, this week, um, there are two notable, um, uh, tributes I'd like to make. Uh, the first is, uh, the peace officers memorial day, which is this, Friday, May 15. Um, this memorial is, uh, an effort to pay tribute to lost lives and, and those who, uh, public safety officers who have been injured on the job. And, um, as many of us know, 140 to 160 peace officers are killed in line of duty each year. Um, with that said, um, I wanted to adjourn in memory of our fallen officers and first responders, but also, uh, in memory of William Willie DePrado. Um, Mr. DePrado lived to the ripe age of 95 years and, um, unfortunately left us on May 5th. Um, I met Mr. DePrado along with two of my colleagues, Mayor Protem Sandin and, um, uh, Councilmember Ledesma, when we, uh, had the opportunity to dedicate Circle Park in his honor. Lovely man. And the, um, his legacy was marked by, uh, all the folks who came out on that day to speak their words of praise and to, um, reiterate their memories, uh, of their childhood, either having been employed for the very first time by Mr. DePrado in the store, being caught shoplifting and being taught a life lesson. And anyhow, um, his importance in this community, uh, were evidenced greatly by the folks who shared their love for him. And so to have met somebody who has made such an indelible mark on our community, um, and to have the opportunity to, to be a part of dedicating a park in his honor was, um, you know, just a fantastic experience, especially in my neighborhood where my children play. So with that, um, I would ask that my colleagues join me in adjourning tonight's meeting in off, in an honor of our fallen peace officers as well as, uh, in memory of Mr. DePrado.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Uh, then, uh, and the motion to adjourn is not debatable. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Um, ma, I'm sorry. Councilmember Guerrero?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sandin?
Aye.
And Merrick Baldwin?
Aye.
Motion carries and our meeting is adjourned in memory of Willie DePrado and in honor of National Peace Officer Memorial Day. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.